April eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. Uh, we'll start off the pledge. Eddie, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To do the power which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Ruth Levy?
You guys signed the order.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the levy rates.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There she is. I knew she was, I knew she was on there.
Yeah, it took me a minute.
Is it okay if she stamped your name, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, please.
Mr. Yan?
Generations, yeah, I'm gonna explain these. It's all three, the same company. It was a mapping issue here. We had some double assessments. There was a survey recorded. We got the maps cleaned up and then we're gonna clean up the tax papers.
I'll make a motion to approve the real estate exonerations.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
These are refunds generated in paying for the taxes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the presented this morning that were from the real estate exonerations.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Remember you have two on each one, two on each one.
Why are you doing that, guys? I want to, I just want to throw this out there this morning. I know you've got a busy day. You don't have much time, but I did have time. I wanted to speak to you about the tip and appeal. Now, I don't know if it's your problem or if it's Oak Hill's problem or we need to call John, John Stump. I don't know. Anyway, the tax, the hospital was non-taxable. Now, John, you, you were on the commission when that thing approved. I brought that up.
Correct.
What happens if the hospital is non-taxable? Well, it's non-taxable. That tip is worthless. It'll never make another dime unless that hospital pays you by the tax. And just to give you an idea, personal property values, with the hospital, they were in, uh, the, the, their status, they were at one point two eight five million dollars. But not the hospital, they're down two point five million dollars. Or two point five million dollars is, you're in the hole, okay? Now, on the real estate, with the hospital, they were up three point, might as well say four million, three point nine nine million. And without the hospital, they're down three million. So you're five million dollars in the hole. There is no way in God and earth that Oak Hill is going to produce five million dollars worth back to make up that tip. Now, the reason I bring that up to you, it's a lot of work for myself to keep up with that tip. A lot of work for Mike Fairley's office to keep up with the tip because they have to separate the money and send it here. There's gonna be minimal money, but they still have a process they have to go through. I think that tip needs to be dissolved if possible.
That would be a John Stump.
Let's just put him on the next agenda.
Okay, so.
But I believe that the city did it themselves, but it didn't come through.
Approved by the state, that's why you guys first.
Yeah, commission has to approve it. The commission also.
You'll have to approve dissolving it.
Got you.
But I don't even know if that's possible. I didn't know if you guys knew.
I think it's possible. You can dissolve any tip. I've already looked into that before with, with Greek party. You can dissolve any tip you want.
Okay, that, I mean, that, I mean, you did what you wanted to do, but.
Might need to have Oak Hill.
I think in seven, and, and I've got, I've been here for thirty-four years and this is the third, third time that this is flipped. So about every, every ten years or eleven years, it flips taxable to non-taxable. So it can be another, if it ever does, the C A M C thing, I doubt that it'll ever, it'll ever change.
Allison, can you take that back to Demita and make her aware?
Um, just back to her.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I notified Oak Hill. Now, also, one was wanting to point this out. There's a twenty-three tax ticket will come out for the real estate and the personal property in the name of like that manager or whatever their name was. And I would fully expect C A M C like that. So they didn't, they didn't, it just crossed my desk in March. So July of the first last year, it was, it was a good assessment. And it didn't change until March. I don't, you know, I don't know how that'll play out, but.
Well, doesn't it have to be six months before it's really considered correct or not, whether it is or not? There's a, there's a timeframe. Am I right, Michael?
Yeah, and also, we need to look at when the property transfer actually occurred. I mean, there's a lot of things to look at.
Yeah, there's some factors in the timeframe that whether it would be, they had the right to, for it to be, uh, non-taxable or not in that tax year.
Well, the twenty-three, I think, you know, we had the same situation prop, pop, popped up with the Kmart building when New River Health took it over. New River Health ended up paying the taxes for that year and then they were non-taxable from that point forward. But that's, you know, I expect them to be knocking on the door here soon.
Yeah, if we can get that information, Mike can let us in.
So do you, do you guys want me to call John Stump?
Oh, she's one of, she's, yeah, she's, we'll set up, go ahead and put her on the agenda, our next agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Eddie.
So they, they have to be signed.
All right. And make a motion to approve the, uh, second half payroll, four twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vouchers and invoices.
Mr. Crookshank here today?
No.
Is he online?
Me and John had some, both had some questions.
If you want to postpone that, because I'm sure we'll have to have to execute.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Postpone vouchers and invoices.
Second.
Postponing to when?
To the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve them.
What's the date?
Second.
All in favor?
April fifth.
That went too fast, didn't it?
That's okay.
That's got signed in it, last page. Yeah, state so.
Do, and you also have that recommendation, recommendation for some of the fiduciary commission or assignment.
That's my understanding that Anthony had reviewed that recommendation and found it to be proper.
Yeah, I think he mentioned that in the last meeting.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Okay, so did you just motion to approve them, Allison?
No, I didn't, but I will. I'm, I moved to approve the estate settlements, including the recommendation by the fiduciary commissioner.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Look at us.
All right, so we will have to wait on the, on the exhibit because Anthony is in a sitting hearing. And then the second one is updating the firms. There you are. And to review and review Bridge Day Commission appointments for several seats. I have, since our, yeah, they're up for renewal this year. I haven't called them for hour and a half, somebody. I'm gonna wait. So, you need to go through one by one, or you can, we'll put them all together.
Just tell us the names and, and then we can do them all as a group.
Okay, so the first one is our vendor community at large advisory representative is PJ Stevenson. She completed the application and she completed the consideration to be appointed to the Bay County Board application. She's been a member of the Bridge Day, volunteered work for many, many years, very familiar with the event. Our rappel coordinator, um, it was Benji Simpson, Jr. This is Benji Simpson, the third. Yeah. Um, we call him B three. So Benji Simpson, the third, and his dad have had multiple conversations about Benji, the third, taking over as rappel coordinator and managing all of the aspects for rappelling on Bridge Day. Again, very familiar with the event, has been a part of it for many, many years. Completed the application and the consideration to be appointed to Bay County. Third is Jerry Wong for emergency services appointment. Very familiar with the event. He's been working with Dan Care, Bridge Day for many, many years. Completed both applications required for this request. Fourth is Frank Sellers with National Park Service. He, um, was appointed by the National Park Service last year. Um, so this would just be a reappointment for, um, the same seat. And he also completed the application. He was a part of Bridge Day last year. It had been for many years, but last year was the part of, um, year I had a Bridge Day mission. And last, I think it is Marcus Ellison for the base, base, um, advisor. Completed those applications and been involved with Bridge Day for many years. He is a local, he's a base jumper, very familiar with the event, the activities and everything we need for base jumping, safety and security. And all the things we're doing with it.
Did you have any alternative people apply?
Uh, well, Benji three is the only new one. Everybody else is doing different.
Okay.
And we posted it as you guys requested. We posted it on both social media, meaning the Chamber and Bridge Day, posted it on both websites. Um, so the information was out there, shared it while when we shared the application and the request.
That last one, Marcus.
Yeah.
I don't think, whether, how the other two commissioners feel about it, but I, I don't think that, uh, I'd be in favor of approving Marcus.
Yep, I agree with that, Becky, and, and you know why. Um, we had some problems with Marcus last year and tried to resolve those and appointed him anyway last time and, um, he continued to behave in the way that we had discussed with him not behaving.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think last year, I think me and John both was not, uh, in favor of that. I'm not speaking for John, uh, what I remember. So, uh.
I don't have, I don't have any other applicants for that position. I have talked to a couple of others. Um, they were involved with base jumping on Bridge Day. Um, and at this time, they are not, they don't have time for it in their lives to, to be on the Bridge Day condition.
Okay, well. Um, can you find somebody else? I mean, I don't think that I'm going to vote to approve. I don't have a problem with anybody else, but that would miss the other two commissioners decide too.
I don't have anybody else right now. I mean, Benji three is in Georgia, so he's going to be doing his, um, meeting attendance for Jordan. Um, so it would have to be something like that if we found somebody in the base community that would be interested in serving, um, kind of base advisor.
Well, Marcus will still be able to participate, participate to the level he wants to. He just will not be part of the board.
So I don't have anybody else, um, to present for approval on that position. So I will, um, put that one back out there.
Yeah.
All right, well, I move that we approve all of the nominees with the exception of Marcus Ellison for the Bridge Day Commission appointments.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I also have my, or my C B B agent report. You all have that digitally. Have a copy of it.
Okay, it is, okay, I see.
This one doesn't need a decision or anything. Just for review.
All right.
I have you to answer questions. And this is twenty twenty-two's numbers. I do have another reporter. I don't know if I sent it to you all, the, the same report that I sent to the state that includes, um, all of the reporting we have to do by March thirtieth of every year for the C B B. Includes the same report, um, our income sheet announced they went for twenty-five. And that's been uploaded to the legislation page.
All right, I don't mean to cut you off for nothing, but we have leadership Fayette County with us and they have a certain time slot that they have to be here. So, uh, we'll get you back here in just a second.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Heer?
Yes.
You want to, uh, introduce your group and?
Uh, I'll let them introduce themselves. Off you go.
Camera so I can see them.
Hi, Catherine Dyer. I go to Oak Hill High School.
Hi, Katie Brazil. I go to Oak Hill High School. I'm Lily Betts. I go to Oak Hill High School.
I'm Lily Zukowski and I go to Oak Hill High School.
I'm Lila Hanka. I also go to Oak Hill High School.
I'm Grace Lee Abbott. I also go to Oak Hill High School.
I'm Melissa Dean Walton. And I too go to Oak Hill High School.
And I also go to Oak Hill High School.
I'm, I'm doing four years in Oak Hill High School.
And then we have two people who do work with us today. One of them is Riley and she goes, Riley, she goes to Mid-Montreal High School. Another is Gavin. He also goes.
Okay, any questions? Anything, Mr. Heer?
Um, yeah, they do have questions for you. I also wanted to introduce our, um, mentor.
Oh, yeah, I'm here. I'm Alex Richardson. Uh, I was a alumni of the Cape County about twelve, thirteen, fourteen years ago. Uh, now I'm studying for them, so.
So she's a perfect example of what this program was, is intended to do. And that is give our, um, participants a sense of place that they may not have had prior to going to this program. We don't ask that they stay here, but we hope that at some point after they go out in the world and gain some valuable experience, they come back to make our home a better place. And that's exactly what Alex is doing and also, uh, a couple of our board members are also alumni to come back to our community. So we're pretty thrilled that the thesis has actually played out over time. But they will have some questions for you. If I may, um, one of the important things, why we want to come to the courthouse is so they can see who is representing them and understand the workings a little bit. So if everybody in here should introduce themselves and tell us what they do, uh, that would be great. Who wants to start?
I'll start. I'm Allison Taylor. I'm, I'm a county commissioner. That's my seat that's empty up there with the others. Um, what we do is we manage the county government and in doing that, we try to bring, uh, infrastructure such as broadband and um, water and wastewater services to people who don't have it. We try to fund community centers. We try to bring economic development to the area so the tax dollars from that development can fund pro, more programming for the county. Um, we sponsor programs like yours. We work with W V U to do some other educational things. Um, and I'll, I'll let my colleagues, um, identify some of the other things, but I know that I myself didn't know much about what a county commissioner did until I chose to run. Um, so there's a lot to it. Anyway, I'm really proud of all of you guys and I would love to hear what, uh, Alex has to say, what advice she has for the students with her.
I'm Tom Luiz, this is county commissioner. I won't say too much. I'm just going to sit here and listen.
Uh, I'm John Brenneman. Uh, I guess I'm the senior person. You can tell by all the gray hair. Um, Allison takes care of what's called New Haven area. Uh, Tom takes care of the plateau and I take care of the valley. Our county is broken up into three districts and we each represent all those districts, but realistically, we take care of everyone in the county, even though we're representatives for a certain area. I, uh, I guess I have been deemed the person that takes care of P S Ds, which is sewers. Also cooked with water. Um, so, uh, each of us have a unique talent. Allison, Allison is our, our legal brains along with our two attorneys that we have. Um, and, uh, Tom is the real estate business guru that we have. So, uh.
Better make me feel good, John.
There you go, buddy. And then we couldn't do our jobs without our support staff. Uh, and we have three of our members here today. So, Wilbert?
My name's Wilbert Livey. I'm the assistant to the mission.
Wilbert's also running for Oak Hill City Council.
Unfortunately, no one's eighteen. Um, I'm Amy Dangerfield. Um, I'm the county commission executive assistant. I've been here ten years. And I live in Fayetteville and, um, my kids don't go to Oak Hill.
Ruth?
Or they might be.
No, I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm gonna tell you, if we ask if I want something researched, I don't have time. This is the lady and the lawyers, besides Ms. Taylor. Ms. Taylor's an asset as well. These, these, Ruth is, uh, the accountant. I call her the accountant. I don't think she's really a accountant. She's a big asset in this, uh, in the county government.
She's basically the C E O of the county. She's the chief executive officer. She runs everything.
Yep, she does.
And anything, any ideas I may have, she will definitely let me know whether she likes them or dislikes them. And that's the way I want it. That's the way I like it. I like lawyers and accountants to tell me whether I'm right or wrong, the ins and outs. And these three here especially is a big asset to the commission and the county.
Yeah. Anthony?
This one. Uh, we have this librarian possibly serving. Um, we do the possibility of being my office. Rather numerous, uh, in part, I'm legal counsel for the county commission. I'm one of the lawyers that tells Tom what to do. Um, and to his credit, he listens to us, which makes my job significantly less difficult. Um, my office is also responsible for juvenile delinquent, uh, cases. Hopefully I won't see any of you. Uh, we handle abuse and neglect cases for parents that, uh, miss little kids or have neglected your kids. And lastly, and, and what I consider to be the most important part of the job, uh, we handle the prosecution of criminal defendants. We handle cases as, uh, minimal as speeding tickets uh, all the way up to cases involving murder. Um, and anything and everything in between, sexual assault, drug crimes, death, uh, you name it. But we're responsible for appearing, uh, in court on behalf of the state of Western Virginia and prosecuting those who are charged with crimes. Questions, anyone?
The mainly people from our county, like you.
My jurisdiction, uh, ends at the county line, so I have no authority to prosecute crimes that were committed outside of Fayetteville.
Angela?
I'm Angela. I'm the final. And I kind of handle the left handed housing and then like the new businesses, kind of just knowing they want to start it all.
Okay, and, uh, one next to last, but she is in charge of all the voting that goes on in the county. Uh, she has a huge, uh, responsibility and does pretty well with it. Go ahead.
I'm Joe Holly. I'm the county clerk. The state county clerk has two main functions in the courthouse. We're the official round people in the county. The birth, deaths, marriages, dreams, mortgages, anything that connects to the real estate is one of the, your life or birth death is reported in my office. And I'm also, instead of people elections official. In charge of all elections in in the county, local, all the way up to the, the federal election.
And if she hasn't already been to your school, she'll be coming to get you signed up to vote. Now, don't let us forget Michael Taylor either. Yeah, now, Mr. Taylor.
My name's, I can tell you, I, I provide outside legal counsel, uh, for the base, kind of, mention I'm a lawyer down in Carroll. Anytime that there's, uh, something that Andrew needs help on, a legal issue, the commission will contact me to help provide, uh, legal services or if, uh, the commission has a specialized, uh, issue, um, that they need really dug into, that's, that's where I come in and help out by assistance doing. I will start having to, I don't know about that.
All right, so, uh, you, you've got us. So now go ahead with the questions or?
Wait a minute. I think one thing to make, make clear too is that to become a county commissioner, you don't have to have any particular qualification. If you ever strive to, to serve your county and government, um, you really just have, need the heart and the will to help the people. I mean, we all represent different districts, but the entire county voted for each of us. We have six-year terms. It's, it doesn't pay well. Um, there are always uh, challenges and frustrations. But if, if you want to serve your fellow man, this is a really good place to do it. And, um, I hope that some of you, as you grow up, um, consider it because it's very hard to get good people to serve in these positions. Um, because it is a lot of work, but it is rewarding as well.
In fact, the only one that requires any, any type of, uh, background is law student attorney. You have to be a practicing lawyer, you or she will be a practicing lawyer in state. But other than that, all of us is one to serve our communities and our.
There is a, a theme we've been, we've worked on all year and that is finding out whether or not, um, the job you're in is something you thought you were doing or that you went to college for. So, uh, especially for your, for your support staff, is that?
Yeah, musicians. But all that research that you have to do, um, really comes in handy, writing. I mean, I've got a kid in college right now and he complains every day about having to research, having to write, but that's like your strongest skills to be able to help, um, because you have to be able to effectively communicate usually in writing because you're doing it all through, um, documents or through, and if you don't have a lawyer that's going to do it for you, um, or through email, um, everything digital stays with us. So be very careful with how you put yourself out there, um, in the written word. Be smart about it.
Yeah, well, my degrees are in Spanish and forensic science and law. Uh, so that should tell you that I'm, you know, really not, the only one I use is law and that's to keep Commissioner Luizos out of trouble. Along with my colleagues.
Takes, takes three of them.
I mean, I, we had to hire a third lawyer just to get, just to keep him out of trouble. So, um, and keep all of us out of trouble, but, but really, I mean, there's, there's no particular degree that will prepare you for government service. If there were, I would have pursued that education as soon as I was elected because I could use it. Um, there's just a lot to learn. You just have to have the will and the desire to serve your fellow man and, uh, be willing to take a lot of criticism while you're doing it because nobody's, everybody's not happy all the time. You know, there's always somebody who has concerns about what you're doing or opposes your ideas.
My life experiences would help me in this. I've been around business since I was fifteen. Been in business with my father since I was nineteen. been in business with my father since I was nineteen, seen ins and outs of financial stuff. That's what really helped me in this position here. When I come to this position, remember this position, this position fits the last thirty-five years of my life. It's funding, budgeting, figuring out problems, fixing problems and everything. So that's what's helped me in this position. I walked right into something that I was doing the last thirty-five years. So, that was my education.
That is a good point, you know, experience is what I've brought to the table more than the education. Just having been in, in government and managing and budgeting and those sorts of things in government, knowing how it works and how difficult it is to purchase things that you want to purchase and all the rules to make sure what we do is fair to everybody involved. That, that I did bring to the table, but as far as an education goes, there's really not an easy way to map out a path to this sort of job.
Now, the lawyers, other hand, may be a little different. Of course, a good lawyer is a good experienced lawyer too, though. Right, Ms. Taylor? Takes three of y'all.
But our CEO, I can't write me into this. Do you have, are you working in the capacity that you got your education?
Two of my degrees, yeah, we couldn't run a county. But it's kind of a HR, and I've done HR for fifteen years, well, I don't know how long, fifteen years when I came here. So, yeah, I'd say so, but a lot of it is critical thinking and liking to big things, because there are things I need to prove.
See, with mine, I'm an electronic engineer, so engineering and, and being a farmer helps you do a lot of things. That's why I guess they gave me the sewers and water. But, yeah, all of us have, have unique traits in what we're doing.
I'm sure these guys have some reservations for you.
I get nervous too, so you're okay.
About how some, like, in our community, the older people are typically voting and the younger people aren't voting as much. So I was curious to know why you guys think that is.
I didn't hear the question, could somebody with a microphone repeat it for me?
Why is the older generation voting when the younger gen, excuse me, younger generation is not voting?
Voting?
Voting.
Why are, why forever has it been that the old people are the ones voting, controlling the young people's lives and the young people are not involved in the voting process?
Yeah.
I think those are individual choices. I mean, you know, I know I was brought up to, you know, my parents and grandparents and everybody taught me the importance of voting, because that is an area where we're all equal, we have one vote. And that vote does matter, especially in small races like county races. Clerk Holly could tell you, there were some other counties that have races won by one single vote. And, and so it's a huge deal to get people out there. And if you don't vote, then you're, you're silencing your ability to control the outcome of an election. I think, I think some younger folks have become disenfranchised with, with all of the fussing going on, especially at the national level in politics. But it's different in, in the state and county level, because we really just want to get good people in office. I mean, we are all friends, all the commissioners are all Republicans, we are all friends and support prosecutor Silla Bertie and Clerk Holly, and we all work really well together, and they're, they're registered Democrats. So it, it's really not about politics down at this level, but it is important that, you know, anybody who wants to say in what's going to happen and how this country and this state and this county is going to be run, get out there and vote.
Michelle, you just go say something?
I mean, I think you're right, I think it's also, younger people are more mobile, like you get to college and you don't think about home as much as you, as you should. And, and then, and older people are more interested in their finances and what turns on and they're the ones paying taxes. And they're like, five hundred thousand dollars, four hundred dollars, and they have more of an invest in that. But, I mean, you guys can change that, you know, we might get easier to vote on how much money you guys all go to college, but you college your next ballot, and then they, the early voting, you have a window of time you can come in to vote. So the earlier you start voting, the more likely you are to continue to vote.
When you, when you said younger, what, what, what age was you talking about? Was you talking about eighteen to twenty-five?
Yeah, like, I don't like this, so. Not saying I'm a full grown adult, but.
Okay. I also think that, I also think that, I'm used to it, you know. I also think that your city and town elections are very important, because that tells you everything that's going on in your municipality or your town, so that you can be a part of that.
It's unusual for them to have to stage.
I actually don't ask, where are you from? But I have to, I'm off.
You know, don't let the lawyers scare you, it's fine.
What is one major change that you'd like to see our view?
Everybody have running water and sewer.
Amen.
Throughout the county. That's, I think it's all three commissioners priority. You have to have development also to fund that also, we're working on that too, but, but water and sewer is a big deal in Fayette County. There's a lot of people that doesn't have running water and sewer.
Forty-nine percent of the people don't have sewer in the county. When it comes to water, you have thirty-two percent of the people don't have running water. So they either have to haul it in or use bottles. So we take a lot of things for granted, we go to a waterfall, turn it on and water comes out. There's still a lot in the county that can't do that.
I feel like that's difficult for people in town.
That it is.
People like, you know, in a good place, like it's not water, I, I gotta do one.
Yeah, you wouldn't hear, you wouldn't believe the times I've said, and I don't want to bring up any areas, but certain areas that provoke cer- certain development, because you sometimes have to have certain development in other areas in order for the water and sewer to be feasibility to pay for the water and sewer developed in other areas. I hope you understood exactly what I was saying there. A lot of people that have it in certain areas, they don't realize that or they don't care about that, but you have to have development sometimes in order to have that infrastructure, be able to do that. So.
I'll fill in the blank later.
Thank you.
Why did you all decide to get into that?
Wow. I, I was one of those people that, that questioned a lot of things that happened. And I had some associates, actually friends of mine told me, well, put up or shut up. They was tired of me talking about it, so I ran.
Ms. Taylor, I'll let you go next. I'll take, I'll take the last on this one.
I was, I was worried because some folks down in Page and Kincaid did not have clean drinking water. They were paying for it and they were getting brown sludgy water that was staining their appliances, staining their clothes. They were not only having to pay a water bill, but they were having to, to cart in water to drink and change their whole lives. And these are not people who, who have a whole lot of money, most of them. And so I, I wondered, you know, if, if anybody was doing anything about it. And so I started reading a bunch of the, the County Commission minutes. So everything that happens in these meetings, all of our meetings for the last two years are on YouTube. But in addition, there's an official record that's taken by the county clerk's office of, of every meeting. So I read four years worth of minutes to try to figure out what was going on and saw, you know, that, that, that there were several issues that just didn't make sense to me. And, and similar to what Commissioner Brenneman said, at that point, I thought, well, I was aggravated with a couple of friends of mine who didn't run for offices I thought they should have when they had the opportunity. And then I thought, well, if I can't get mad at them without doing it myself and stepping up to try to, try to change some of the things that I saw wrong. And so that's, that's why I ran.
Well, my father served twenty-two years as, at the House of Representatives. And for twenty-two years, I said, I'm not ever gonna, everybody said you need to run, everybody said you need to do this. I said, I'm never going to run for office, I'm not into politics, I'm not into any of that. But over the twenty years, twenty-two years, I've seen some of the stuff that's happened, had the inside on things that happens politically. And once he was out of it, I said, I guess I gotta do it. So that's why, that what, that's what drove me to come here and try to make a change.
What advice would you all give someone who wants to get into government or law or politics?
You're made for a lot of work. I mean, if you wanted to law school, you're looking at four years of undergrad and then three years of law school. Then you go to pass the bar exam. And then, once you pass the bar exam, you're gonna probably end up doing legal work to assist other lawyers rather than to actually appear in court. But, but at the end of the day, it's, you know, I've, I've been a lawyer now for over twenty years. My first public practice, I represented. If you actually told me twenty-three years ago that someday I'd be a prosecutor, I, I would have told you you're nuts. I was always, you know, fight the establishment, that kind of attitude. And then, after representing criminals for a couple of years, I got the opportunity to work as an assistant prosecutor and discovered that it's a lot easier to go home at night and sleep when you're putting the criminals in jail as opposed to helping them stay out. I did that for five years and went back into private practice mainly for financial reasons. And then decided to pursue this job because I didn't, I, I didn't like how prosecutors office was being run. I mean, as a defense attorney, I achieved good results for my clients, but, you know, keep in mind that I lived here too. And I didn't like seeing what was happening with some of the criminal cases, and that's one of the reasons that I was proud of the time we're prosecutors. I felt like I wanted to make a difference. We prosecute aggressively in Fayetteville. Cases that we prosecute as families get plugged into the mist and we routinely enroll the county, Canowah County, Ringrider County, Charleston lawyers, faculty lawyers don't like coming here because they're not nice to criminals. But, but that's a big part of why I wanted to become prosecutor, was to make a difference. I feel like so far I have. But it's, it's a good, if you're interested in law school, it's a good way to make a living. And like I said, you can, you can certainly go home and sleep well, it's like, certainly a lot easier than being on the other side. And I'm not diminishing the role of defense attorney to play in representing criminals. I mean, they're entitled to have lawyers, they're entitled to have good representation, but, but the job that we do as prosecutors, we, we give victims a voice, we to an extent can right wrongs. And, you know, Fayetteville, realistically, we don't have a lot of crime, comparatively speaking, but you'd be amazed at what goes on here. We usually have about two murders a year, we've already had two so far this year. There's a lot of sex offenses that go on, a lot more than what I thought. And of course, the big one is probably more so than anything are drug crimes. But, but like I said, you, you feel like you, you know, sort of what I do, you feel like you make, you make a difference for the community. You feel like you're making a difference for the people that live here, but it's not bad for the communal living and you can make a decent living if you decide you want to go to law school. But it's, it's a long, it's a long road to go, go down.
Politically, as far as your position, it's not just, you get the position to meet every two weeks. Most of these positions are full time, they're on forty hours a week jobs. That's something people don't realize. My dad told me, you only meet twice a month, he doesn't do that. And I said, okay, that's, yeah, I'm in. No. And you have to be, you, you know, you've got obligations.
Here, the commission is in some part home.
Yeah, and our jobs are really twenty-four seven. I'm seven days, I have seven days a week between the store and the commission for the people. It's, it's, so you plan on working a lot if you do run for anything, to be involved in anything politically.
Pandemic, that your system is getting complicated, you know, time wise and.
We did have to change the ways we were doing business at the courthouse. We only allowed a certain amount of people in, we had a deputy at the back door. That was the only way they could come in, they had to check in, check out. But I think overall, we did a pretty good job keeping things running.
Yeah, I think the pandemic, I believe, actually helped in the organization, and maybe some people will think I'm wrong. But everybody went to Zoom, we had a lot of Zoom meetings, a lot of Zoom. Now, if you can't make a meeting because of certain times, you can go to Zoom, you can attend other meetings by Zoom. You can be in two different places within fifteen minutes of each other of, of to be two different meetings. Sometimes commission may have a meeting at two o'clock and one of us might have another meeting at three o'clock. The two o'clock meeting overlap and we can actually go into Zoom immediately instead of driving to an area for a meeting. So in a way, it hurt us to start with, but because of Zoom now, the way meetings are done now, we can actually communicate a lot better and be in multiple meetings within a day, within just a click of a button. So that's, I think it's, it hurt to start with, but it helped in the end.
I think that flashing lights was our.
Yeah, it's about that time.
Would it be okay if the kids climbed in behind you for a photo?
Yeah, sure. We have to stand, stand in. We were supposed to sit there. Yeah, we stand behind.
I can hear Michelle up there.
Y'all don't look at my notes that everybody puts up here for me to show up. Sit still, be quiet. They smile at me, I mean, I got, everybody tries to take care of me.
I see some of my teen court kids in there. They know a little bit about lawyering.
I wish I could have said to the voting thing, doesn't run in the government more when you get older or various levels? Yeah, and you realize, okay.
You shouldn't have, shouldn't, shouldn't have said anything, you shouldn't have. All right, I guess we're a little late, but, Mr. Kessler?
That's where, if I don't get our, we, we probably, I think it's Mike, Jeff, Peter, America, William, Al, and, and John, representing this Appalachian Heights project. I may also, I hadn't, I didn't enroll this morning, so probably here, we're gonna look at it together, give you the questions, here, you might be able to utilize. The, as you guys may be aware, the Appalachian Heights project's the project we've been working on over, over the last four to five years, six years, putting together finances, there's been a sort of cajun hall to kind of put it all together. So at this point, the project got a commitment of two million from, from our development officer. Miss Carmichael, well, with the down there in Charles, but also Raleigh County's has, has a lot to. Has a, has a lot to gain here. With that, they've contributed two million dollars in project. And the developer has contributed two hundred fifty thousand, which leaves us a need of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I, I come from a city standpoint, requesting the commission's consideration. On helping partner with us to finish this project and what this will do for the city of Malhove, as everyone's aware. We took, I think, a considerable loss in our buy, through the buyout, the flood buyout. We lost. A third of our customer base. These customers that are remaining, uh, have had to incur the debt of, uh. Before the buyout. So we had that project, water project, sewer project. The city had indebted itself to do these projects and then, you know, unbeknownst to us. Buyouts, trips a lot of that ability for us to pay back those debts, which put the city in pretty financial hardship. Uh, in turn, we had to raise water rates, which, you know, for a small city like Malhove. You know, a small city, low income city as well, put a, put a, hard financial burden on citizens in Malhove. To, uh, continue to keep those bonds current and prepare reveals. And we've been able to navigate through that. That past, past years, uh, this project, we feel like it's coming along. And it's going to give us an opportunity to sell its water, pump about water through. I wish, I wish we had our plant where we could. Where we could, where we could move and serve some of the various crops that they desperately needed. We're sort of on the other side of that. In fact, the Malhove's blessed in the fact that we've got an enormous water supply that. Virtually second to none on water, so the raw water's really good quality water. And we've got an immense amount of that. So we've put about thirteen million a day back, back on the ground. Uh, gallons of water a day. We have the ability to treat, and we are providing the computers, the house, providing that area. And, 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 and all that's fine. At this point, the option that we have from the city would be master metering this water, wholesaling this water virtually. Through the PSD, uh, we wouldn't incur any of the costs or expenses. Of the pumps, the tanks, any of that distribution part. So the city, what the city would be able to do is, uh, with just a small, a small portion of an investment. We've had fifty, seventy five years with fishing gains, uh, there and been able to, to get that water virtually to the market. Uh, was what we desperately need to do. Uh, so, so I'm here just humbly requesting the commission. If you guys would, would be willing to help us in this project. Sure, none of you guys have all been aware of the project, we've talked about it for a number of years now. But we are at that point to where we just need that a little bit to get over the edge. And, uh, I know the county has a, has a lot going on, and I know you guys budgets just like, like ours and everyone else. But, uh, I just humbly request the commission's consideration. To help us get this project over the line. Feel like the. With, with, with a favorable decision here, uh, today. We, everything's together. So you guys are our last stop here to, to finish this off. And, and the benefits, I, you know, as, as obvious, again. It's a small investment to give the city and hope the possibility of fifty, seventy five years worth of revenue. To sort of offset some of those prior losses that we've experienced as a community. And, you know, we try not to, to come and, and ask for every little question, every little thing. Kind of work things out on our own over there the best we can, but we're at a point now where we feel like that. That everything's favorable for us. The funding that's in place, we can feel like that. You know, there's a window of time for all those, those other funding that's been committed. And now really a time to try to put you across. If you have any questions, our request would be again, two hundred fifty thousand, finish the project.
Yeah, Chris, so?
Yeah, um, Mike, you're working with region one on this?
Region four.
You're working with region four instead of region one?
Yes, sir. Region four in the fine development in, has, has been part of the project since its creation. John Tuggle, they'll be administrating the, uh. The funds such as it pays out.
I was told that technically going to the Grand Palace, region one and greatest.
They, they may well be, again, we're in region four. So, so like, virtually, virtually, no, like. I'm just basically representing from the city standpoint and from our engineering standpoint. Of what we would need to construct that.
How many, will you be adding any new citizens? And this was an Allison question, are you?
New citizens?
You have any customers?
Yeah, we. In Fed County, no, sir. We, we, we're currently providing all the way over to, through Fed County and into Raleigh, correct.
How many houses did you lose when we buy out?
There was a hundred and sixty six.
In other words, you lost revenue.
Yeah, about a third of our.
Thirty of your revenue was lost. Put you in the financial. And I understand when you lose, you know. Being in business, I, I understand that. So, that this would maybe.
It would definitely sure, sure rates. It would, it would definitely, it was obviously, obviously. You know, a lot of the infrastructure that we put in Malhove, whether it be, whether it be in the plants. To provide the capacity, or whether, you know, as I said, our most blessed resources are raw water. Which is Artesian well, it's a Guti type system, but, uh, we're blessed with an immense amount of water.
So it, could it possibly, this would give the upgrade that we'd need even to provide. Other areas in Fed County if it was developed?
Sure.
I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, okay, so what I'm, what I'm asking is, will the upgrade be above and beyond? What you would need to service other areas in Fed County if needed?
Yes, sir. It would, it would put us in a better position for distribution. It, it for, for. The southern part of the county. It would, it would, it would, it would put us in a better position for, for.
How far do you run? How far does Mount Hope run the water through, against other areas, uh, north of Fed County?
We, we provided the summit their water, so that would virtually take us to the edge of Glen Jean, right?
Do you go all the way to Glen Jean?
Well, we, we, through the summit, the backside, American Water serves that area. Uh, down that way, but we, we, we have a connection there on that end. That if, if the, if the folks on, on, if American Water was to have. A catastrophe as such as Beckley has had in the past, we would be able to, to assist in that. Because we, we do have a much bank of meters there, uh, on the backside of Glen Jean.
Can you service all of the nineteen here if needed? How far do you, I'm just curious, how far does it run?
Obviously, infrastructure would have to be put in place.
But, but this, this would give you the upgrade, maybe the funding to help other areas.
It would, what, what it would do, it would totally, it would position us to be able to do a couple of things. One. To service, to service that Appalachian Heights area. Two. If any, if, if, if any of the, um, gardening ground area, you're familiar with it, it'd be South of Kill Site. And as it develops, you know, and, and it's, it's thousands of acres of green space, there's, there's beautiful property back there and I'm not sure.
This, this upgrade would have the ability, you wouldn't need another upgrade.
Not at that point, we would.
Then, other than infrastructure going to, extending, extending it, going to developable areas.
That, that's, that was my, that's the main trunk line. Yeah, that was my concern is. If it just gives you an upgrade to service from here on, I wouldn't so much be in favor of, but it would also give you the ability. Just to, then it wouldn't have to do a, a planned upgrade.
Right.
To service other areas in Fed County.
Right.
Then I would, I would be.
Yeah, yes. And, and, you know, and, and ultimately, and I can't, I can't make any promises, but, you know, our. Our hopes and thoughts are, and, and, and conversations have been on the rule forty two. As we do this, we have to have a rule forty two PSC that we could hopefully offset this. Where we can lower the rates for citizens of Malhove. Now, I, I don't want to say that.
It's going to happen. Going to say.
Certainly our intention.
And when you lose a third of your revenue.
Those folks had to come up with it. I mean, you know, the, you know, we had the sewer. With, with the sewer project, right? And, and virtually the grass barely began to grow on this. Pride, on those, those sixteen dollar projects, since the city had to. In, insert, ensure debt and, and, and bonding for, firstly, for the project even. Grass grow on the project, the, the next government agency comes in and, and buys these folks out. So we, we've invested so much in all that middle infrastructure there, and it's just there. So the last, you know, two thirds of the folks in Malhove had to, our rates had to, you know, and we've got so far ahead. At this point, the curve, folks are catching up with the curve, so we're not out there alone, but, you know. We had two, two or three hard years there where some, you know, some of the horse people in the state of West Virginia are paying the highest price for water. You know, due to that. Uh, so we're just, just trying to do everything we can to, to, to one, uh, shore the city up. We have an immense resource, we have something we know is tremendous value, and, uh. We feel like that we can help and contribute further, uh, further beyond the city limits. You know, sign. And we'd like to, we'd love, love to be able to get, I mean, I feel the same way, I have that same passion. Every, every American citizen should have a right to clean, healthy water and, 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 and proper sewage disposal. So.
But this is, this is leading our priorities, so we have no issue. I feel we should go forward.
Ms. Taylor, you have any questions?
So. What I gather is your intent is to, it's going to poise you to be able to serve further development along Route nineteen. And the benefit to, um, the residents of the city of Mount Hope and other residents in Fayette County. Who receive water are, may be able to benefit from a, uh, rate decrease. That was caused by the, the homes that you lost some time back.
I, 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 we, we certainly, we're hoping, thinking that, that, that the additional revenue. Um, is going, it, it is going to allow us, as we go through rule forty two and these rates are established. To have a strong closer look to where we can, we can have a rate reduction for the citizens of Malhove. Is basically what's happened. It's the citizens that are left, the amount that were left after, after the buyout. Has had to incur all the debt where we had, we had programs, we had, we had projects, the, you know. For, for the Dunlupe, cleaning the Dunlupe, you know, we had, well, we personally have one government agency come in, D E P. Encourage you to do this, do this, do this, clean our creeks, and, you know, that's our passion, that's what we wanted to do. So, so we did the big I and I project, we extended the sewer project to Kill Site, we did all this work. And then, you know, less than, less than four years, um. We're, we're seeing all this community is just dismantled and, and gone through, through another government agency, uh. You know, uh, from flood buyouts, you know, we obviously, you know, we, we've experienced hard times through floods and. And Malhove couldn't accept to that. We had two major floods in a period of ten years and. And so that, that sort of facilitated the buyout. And, and so basically, it's just like, it's just like Tom, the more, the more hot dogs you sell. Ultimately, the more money you make.
Your fixed cost goes down.
Right, so, and that's where we're at. Our fixed cost is where it's at, you know, we've got, we've got. You know, you guys have all seen our plant, water plant, our sewer plant, we've got, we've got a state of the art water and sewer plant, you know? We, we really do, uh, years and years and years of folks tirelessly effort. Boy, my face here has spent an entire lifetime to ensure we had water plant and sewer plant, you know, that was. That was top of the line, and we had an immense raw water supply. So we had, you know, all, all the pieces were there for us. And then, you know, things were good, and then, then things changed, right? So this is just another area for us, um, to sort of edge ourselves. Feel like that, again, for such a small investment. The county to be helping the city in such a small way in comparison to the fifty years of. A possible game that we can, that we, we will see. And I, and, you know, I, I don't believe anyone with any false illusions that. That, that, oh, we're going to do this for rate increase, but I can promise you this, that as we go through that rule forty two. If we can get five percent, if I, I would feel, I mean, if anything, one percent. But our motive and our goal was, we go through that rule forty two process, with, with, with the PSC. Is to force them to, 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 to offset those rates for the citizens of Malhove. So that's, that's, that's our main goal. And, and we do believe in the overall project. I think it's going to be a great project for the entire Southern part of the state of West Virginia. I think we all staying to gain on that. You know, the nineteen quarter, I mean, we're primed ready. So I hope that the, the county has. Uh, has any potential for growth or development or anything, and they need infrastructure. Uh, from a city of Sam, of Malhove's standpoint, we're, we're more than eager, willing to see that growth. And, and, and to help it in any way we possibly can. But, and, and again, appreciate your, your time this morning.
Any more questions, Ms. Taylor, or anything?
Uh, just that, do you have customers, water customers right now who are outside of the city limits in, in Fayette County?
Yeah, uh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, Kill Site, um, we, you guys just granted our past annexation for. The, uh, for a high series, so those folks are now in the city. Uh, the Kill Site area is our, is our next proposal, um. You know, we're, we're, with, with the changes in the state legislature, it's only allowed every, every two years to. To, to, to come for the commission to ask for those annexations. We're trying to put together a. Plan, so to speak, of our next approach and, and, uh, you know. Hopefully, as, as things work, working on things with Commissioner Lewis's concerning, uh. Really good idea, it might be really good for the growth. But we're sort of trying to plan that out. We, we hope to be in a position where we come for that annexation, bring those folks in the city. Kill Site, that'd be your southernmost citizens in the county as far as Malhove, sir. Uh, so our next goal is, is to, is to, is, is to do an annexation there and bring that in. That little part of the county is a tough part, you know, it's, it's, it's furthest end of, it meets the furthest northern end of Raleigh County. The further southern end of, of Fayette County, those people, people are just kind of, they're just kind of out there, you know?
Mike, if the commission ever had a piece of property on nineteen that joins Mount Hope. For a, a large industrial development.
Yeah.
Would your plant service a large industrial development?
Absolutely, sir, yeah, absolutely. Like, we, like, we.
You wouldn't have, need any upgrades to do that?
The distribution and the collection, you know, we would have to build a water sewer out through it. As far as the capacity of the city goes, we are, we are way under capacity. We, our sewer plant, we just completed that E Q basin project, and sure you guys are aware of that, the tank that's on the bypass. That, that, that gives us insurance that we're not going to put anything into Dunlupe. So any kind of, of overflow bypass situation, you know, that. In, in the event of a, that bad rain or an I I issue, it's going to allow us to collect. That stuff that sewage and hold it and then slowly treat it out instead of bypassing our plant. Dumping into the, into the Dunlupe. We, we've been very proactive on quality of water, trying to improve. I mean, and, and I think it's proven, um, you know, the folks in Carolina limited have been big, big friends of ours over there. And they come every year and, and, and they do studies on the creek and, and, and even with. Studies on the creek and, and, and even with trout, we've been docking trout. Actually out there for about five or six years and so the last year, we saw that those trout are reproducing. So we know, so things are good, right? I mean, so I think these are all positive steps for making forward environmentally and also. Or provide just quality of life for citizens of, of our area and I think that's all of our goal, like the vision, right? So water, sewer, quality of life, I mean, those are important things.
As far as I know, we haven't made any investments in the city of Mount Hope. Since the, we received the ARPA money or in the whole time that I've been in office, which is two and a half years. Um, we have made similar investments in other communities as they've come to our attention, including the. Midland Trail Community Center and, um. Water projects in Meadow Bridge and in the New Haven District also. Um, we've also tentatively set aside some money for, um, the Montgomery area, although it hadn't been allocated. Because the original plan fell through. Um, and so we're investigating the alternative plan, so all, all that said, I think this sounds. Very in line with what the commission's been trying to do strategically as far as economic development and infrastructure. Um, I think, um, as Commissioner Luis has intimated, that, that there may be some development along that corridor in nineteen that Mount Hope. Could service with an investment like this and that's been very important to this commission. To get that economic development in and, and raise revenue, tax revenue for the county. So, um, for that reason, I move that we approve the, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in the Mount Hope. Um, water and sewer infrastructure.
Second, all in favor?
Uh, aye. Thank you, thank you guys so much, we're very, very, very appreciative and again, we, we try not to. You know, I'm not giving down to you folks, we know you guys have got a lot on your plate. Thank you for your time this morning and thank you very much for, for getting this project finished, I mean, so thank you very much.
Have a good day, bud. You guess we're. Angela?
Yeah, I probably do, if, if I don't mind, we're late anyway. I mean, sorry, this is the one reason I've been here before time, it's really quick.
Okay.
Right, so you guys have a list, um, um. Yeah, you can go ahead and sort that, go ahead and go to the behind the eight, it's the next to the last one. Um, this is case number, um, one nine eight, it's five nine four five, El Hassan Road. Cover of West Virginia Plateau, tax note twenty nine, twenty five. Um, this, go over down.
Which case was it?
The next to the last one, one ninety eight, and I believe we got a case. Um, so this property. Um, the beautification met on March twenty third. And these are the items they found, and so it was abandoned and it's not being used for residence. Well, it is partially covered with vines and vegetation, it appears to be in a general state of disrepair. The building or surface is not to be connected in utility services, windows are not intact, allowing weather to improve. And is accessible by vermin and some rodents. So the board met and, um, they, um. Questioned that the property being demolished and leaving with so stuff. This property, um, the property owner. Um, there is a land contract on it, so I did send the notice to the property owner and the person holding the land contract, but if you want to clear. Um, they probably can ask me some questions and I'll let you take.
The deed is in my name, so I have a land contract and as a result of. Um, so first off, when the first letter was sent, I had plans to address certain of the issues. For example, getting the property locked up, closed, so on and so forth, on behalf of the person that I had a land contract with. We had a death in the family, I had to go to New York for a funeral, um, missed the twenty third. And so called, I guess I spoke with you, spoke with her, you know, told her, and said the other. Um, the person I had a land contract with has decided to drop the land contract. And they have been paying on it since twenty nineteen. And so since twenty nineteen, they haven't done anything with it. I did, however, have another person that has come along and I told them the whole situation. They've checked out the property, they believe that the property is salvageable and it's a project that they want to deal with. Uh, and so I did a new land contract with them. However, I do have to file an official cancellation of the previous land contract before I can pull, record. Um, this one, but I do have a signed and notarized, I can show you. I have pictures as of last night, the property has been secured by what has been put up. Uh, they've already had someone come out and look at the, the roof, look at, you know, different things. And they have plans to make it livable, um. In the foreseeable future.
Okay, so the people in twenty nineteen, did you refund their money?
No, no, because as, as, um, according to the land contract. Their defined property is owner financed, they knew what they were buying and they. Were buying it mainly for the six acres of land that comes with the property. And the house, they originally weren't interested in the house and I said, okay, well, I'll try to pursue someone else to purchase the house and they said, well. Can you just throw it in? And so I did, and so they paid on that as well.
Yeah, usually it's a default, they default, they don't get, yeah, you don't have to refund, yeah, they don't get.
This wasn't a rental, this wasn't any agreement for me to do anything to the property. Pursuit of the contract, this was their agreement to.
Okay, well, I, I saw the property yesterday, had a meeting in Pax and went by, it is secure. Um, I even stopped to check the bottom door because the door, I think it was a fire, but it was. On this new land contract, what, what? I mean, you know, usually they're living in the place and they, and they live there and make payments and hopefully in fifteen years. They, they own the property.
Yeah.
What is this land, what is this land contract, are they going to live there?
No, so from what I understand, they're going to try and fix it and turn it into like a rental property or, or something else that they're looking to do.
So I mean, do they have an option that has to be done now or, or does it say, what, what's the extent of the land contract?
Well, so the land contract, the terms of land contract are more of, um, here are the payments. You know, this is how it is, um, it's, there's no stipulation in the land contract that I have placed on the person. Because we have a verbal agreement in place that they have believed that they can do this project and that they can make it. Uh, livable enough to standard that is appropriate, um, as money comes in for them to do so. And so.
The reason I asked, Tom?
Well, I didn't stipulate a timeframe because I've never run into a situation where I've had to stipulate a timeframe.
Yeah, but what's?
I'm reticent because I don't know the financial situation and the person's. Um, you know, if I stipulate a thirty day timeframe, well, I'm stipulating a financial situation on this person. And so I don't know their finances.
Well, what, what's the extent, the years of the, of the?
Oh, oh, the years of the agreement, okay, I'm sorry.
That's basically, I think, what Anthony around. But they have to do something.
Problem that I see is that at this point, Mr. Johnson's the owner, he is the one responsible for the property. Um, until the deed is signed and conveying ownership to the purchaser. Uh, you, Mr. Johnson has been responsible. The fact that this property is being sold under a land contract says to me that the buyer probably has credit issues. And is not in a position to borrow the money to buy the property or alternatively, they don't have sufficient. Money on hand to purchase the property, which. To me, further suggests that the purchaser is not going to have the financial ability to do anything with this property. And of course, I acknowledge that speculation on my part, but.
No, I, I, I see where you're coming from, yeah, yeah.
Reason why properties are generally sold with, sold on land contracts is because the seller. Does not have the ability either through cash on hand or through the ability to access. Financing for a, a lending institution to purchase the property out of. And I'm guessing that what's going to happen here is this buyer is going to get the property. Uh, under the sole land contract and it's going to be sick and nothing's going to be done.
Yeah, I see where you're going with that. What, what's the extent of it anyway?
So it's three hundred dollars a month and it turns up with interest being a hundred and forty payments. This is the way that I pursue all my contracts. Um, at three hundred dollars a month, they can get it up and ready and they can turn around and rent it, make a profit on it. Uh, the, um, the buyer, Mr. Benjamin Howington. Believe that you have, um, come across him before. And he has already had somebody to come over to tell him what the cost of utility. Uh, electric upgrade and service roofing issues that need to be corrected, so on and so forth, so he's already being proactive. Um, and so that's where we're at with it.
I, I guess what my question is, I want to, for the commission, is what? And, and maybe I'm, what, it, what would the commission be satisfied with? If, if it would be even satisfied with.
Sure.
Needed to be done to the property within a certain period of time, I think that's what Anthony was getting at, a certain period of time. That the commission does not go forward with, with doing something, I think that's what the, the whole issue is, correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony.
Well, I don't know what the legality is, obviously. Your lawyer would as far as a timeline and requiring a citizen to have utilities on a house that's not being currently lived in.
Well, what would the beautification committee consider, maybe I need to redo this, what would you think?
They voted to have it demo, so we, that's just their recommendation.
Did they say it was structurally unsound or just?
At this state at the time, they think it's in disrepair, um, they think it will cost more to fix up than to tear down. So, I mean, you guys, it's just a recommendation, but you guys can do whatever.
I mean, ultimately, the county commission can do whatever it wants to in terms of the timeframe. And as far as taking actions, if the county commission. The enforcement agency's recommendation. You can amend it, you can reject it. Um, altogether. Um, but my suggestion to the county commission would be that. Within a certain period of time. That the renovations to this property begin. I mean, and, and you can, you can essentially issue, you can. Basically present the complaint in such a way that it says that. Um, I think you can present a complaint that basically. Sets a timeframe for renovation and in the event renovation doesn't commence within that timeframe, then demolition and disposal. And, and again, Mr. Johnson may not want to hear this, he is the owner of that property. Uh, Mr. Howington has an equitable interest in the title, but Mr. Johnson's the owner, so.
And he'll be the owner until it's paid for.
He's the owner until he, he's the owner, until he signs the deed and transfers title over to Mr. How.
Which what I can do leaving today is I can do a deed of trust on a promissory note to Mr. How. Or, um, the commission can stipulate a timeframe. And I will go to Mr. Howington and ask him, can he complete it within his timeframe? Because if he cannot, then I'm just going to end up deeding the tract of land to the county because I don't have the, the funds that are necessary to tear it down. The way that this property is situated is the house has a footprint that's been one crack from the six acre. And so I can just leave the one track to the county to have it tore down of, as per the beautification letter I would see.
Johnny, did you go in the building?
Well, I was in it years ago when a person lived there, but.
So when, when I was asking whether it's structurally sound, you know, I was looking at the block and looking at everything. Sometimes structurally sound, you know, is, the roof's flat, is it, is it a flat roof?
So I think it's, it's very slight incline. And, um, there is a section in one of the bedrooms where, you know, the, the drywall and the ceiling and the insulation has come down. But as per Mr. Howington's inspection of it, he believes that it's structured with sound, there's very strong rough cut oak for this, for the. Structure of the roof. And he believes that if the project were to invest in them, to get back up to a decent standard.
John, when you walked around, did you see any, uh, structural, we were not engineers, I'm just asking.
No, there was, there was nothing I could see on it, I just made sure that all the windows and the doors were locked and.
On the second floor, have you been on the second floor?
Right, well, I originally had a home I did, yeah.
Was it a second floor, uh, stable?
Yes, yep, there are no holes in the flooring, nothing that you can fall through. Um, there has been some leaking, uh, Mr. Howington told me about it, said that he didn't believe that it compromised the floor and it was worth.
And the floor is concrete on the second floor, well, first floor, I mean.
On the first floor, it is concrete, it's all concrete with the block around, second floor is wood.
I'm looking, I really don't see any. It just, you know, is anybody living, is anybody trying to live in it?
No, nobody, nobody's trying to live in it since. Prior people owned it before I came to office.
Well, I'd say at least you showed up and that's, that's a big. That's a huge plus in, in us trying to work with you with this, I think, I don't know how the other two commissioners feel about it. Uh, I'd be willing to put maybe with the other two commissioners, maybe put this off and try to work something out. Give a timeframe and see what we can do about it, because I don't think, you know, I'm not an engineer, but it doesn't look like. And John said you didn't see any.
No.
You didn't see anything where a block with a concrete cracked between the block or anything like that.
And the board just thought it was a general state of disrepair.
Yeah, just, yeah, looking at it, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to look at structural with what I, what. What I was looking at and it, it looks like it could be fixed, but the question is. At whether they want to do it in a timely fashion. Oh, that, John, you want to talk to me more about it?
Yeah, the, the only things I can see on it is, you know, the windows would definitely need to be replaced. Uh, the drywall, the insulation on the inside, the electrical, the. HVAC plumbing, um, a lot of door work. I mean, there will be a, a lot of extensive finances going into that.
To me, it, at least the windows and the roof. And, and the way it looks on the outside at least would need to be fixed, in my opinion, to make it at least. You know, look presentable.
Sure.
Um, as far as the inside, I know time, it takes time to electrical work, it takes time to fix everything on the inside. But, uh, if it's structurally sound, I wouldn't have a problem with the wind, I don't know how the beautification feels about it, but. How the other two commissioners feel about it, but as long as the, the, it was presented better than what it is. That was what it would mean to me, and like John said, windows.
And, uh, Mr. Luis, as I mentioned, we defer action just for sixty days to see what progress is made and follow up.
Hey.
Or whatever period of time.
And then you can talk to the gentleman also, see.
Yeah, yeah, as far as, as far as the outside, the outside. And, and the presentability of the property really, you know, can be taken care of a lot quicker than you can. Re-plumb, re-wire, and so on and so forth, and that's why Mr. Howington could not rewire, replumb. Re-renovate in a sixty day manner.
Is it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the commission's wanting to finish.
No, I understand, I understand.
They're wanting to see something happen within six.
Sure, well, something has already happened prior to when I got this last.
Bored it up, yeah.
So, so, and I kind of come here in good faith because something has happened, I have addressed, you know, that issue. So I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, you know.
No, would, would you mind if Angela took a, and I'm putting you on the spot, Angela, before you. Would you mind if Angela walked through the, the property with you? Just so the commission would have an insight of what the inside may look like, I mean, I'm just, I don't know whether you'd want to do that or not.
Sure, I would prefer not, I would prefer not because of it being a beautification. Being these issues that we can dress as part of the outward looking manner goes.
As long as nobody could get in there, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the unfortunate situation is, is there's a lot of drug addicts that go through there and they tear off plywood and maybe. You know, vagrants, but I, I believe that I can commit to making sure that it remains. Boarded up, grass cut, no accumulation of trash. You know, I can't, I can't say necessarily that it will be painted quickly. But, you know, as far as the general grounds go, you know, we can make it sure that it's not.
More presentable.
Yeah, yeah.
There are another option too that you have available is. There are another option too that you have available is um, the county commission. Uh, you can give the county commission permission to come on to the property and demolish and dispose of it. And then find a run just to renew uh, deed of trust to the county.
Yeah, as, as per the letter that I received for beautification, I believe that I can, I can do a promissory note, do a deed of trust. Uh, or I can deed the property to the county as well. And so, you know, it's just. Part of the options, you know, I understand there, there are options that we have.
There is one more thing. There is some funding out there for renovating properties. I don't know exactly. I, I've talked to.
Not in my office, but there, I mean, a housing.
Region four, I've talked to, I think region four or NRG, DRDA, and there is some funding sources out there. Is that right, John? Did I say it right? I'm not asking it myself.
You messed it up.
I got it right here, but I never say it right.
You did not it right.
I never do. I got little notes everybody gives me up here. I really should have a board up here that covers my face up here. But I think there is some funding sources out there that I, I don't know exactly what they are. I've been told that, that there is.
Sure.
And maybe you or this person can get involved there and see to help with the redevelopment of this, of this property.
Okay.
And just a side note, if they did, if you guys allowed them time, they would need to get a building permit and make sure everything's inspected, not just going in and doing it without being up.
I, I don't mind. I, I don't have any days the other two commissioners have, but I wouldn't mind giving them some time to. To figure this thing out and try to make it presentable.
I'd like him to come up with a plan. Like to give him time to come up with a plan and have him present that plan to us. And then we could go from there.
How much time do you need? Okay.
Well, you all, you all meet bi-weekly?
Yeah.
Well, no, we only meet a couple times a month, not bi-weekly.
Or, I'm sorry, as far as this goes, is this where I would come back to present said plan? Uh, when, when, how often do they occur?
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
Um, no. Aren't they every two? Yeah, it's every two weeks. Well, there's, there's a cap coming up and then.
Just give him the date.
Third's the next one.
Okay, um, and then the one that would be following the third?
Let me see, I gotta, I gotta this thing. Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay, um, I can come back to seventeen after talking with uh.
Coming up with a plan?
Yeah, we just kind of see where we can go from there.
You okay with that, John? You okay with that, Ms. Taylor?
Yep. I move that we postpone until the seventeenth May.
Second, all in favor? Appreciate you coming in. It makes, it does make a difference.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and just a little FYI, if you have any more properties that have windows and doors, bust it out.
I, I kind of gave my heads up already.
Absolutely, um. Yeah, yeah. It's, it's kind of an interesting um, conundrum. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a legal broker. And so as far as my understanding of the land contract go, there are rights that this, the buyer has barring the certain things.
Yeah.
And so when I sell a property, when I get it, I have some property that it's old five years ago, that I can't. Touch. And so it's.
If two people agree, you can write anything you want up any certain place as long as two people agree and you sign it.
Sure, sure. Yeah, no. So, okay. All right, then we'll, uh, do that and.
If you want to call me a couple days before I can tell you what time. It'll be either nine or ten.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Now y'all can take a quick break.
And I have a point out. Becky has been patiently waiting.
I know. I was wondering why she's still here. Yes.
So the red tape appointment is there. Obviously, the expiration dates are all scattered. I just want to have them all expire on April the thirtieth of the year, not change the year, so the term is still the same, year's still the same. But I just want them all to expire on April thirtieth. So if I'm not coming back in August, then closer to today to do it.
That's understandable.
It's just the month of the day.
And just like as they expire, we'll just change it. Yeah.
So that's, that'll be in April thirtieth of whatever the given year is.
Yeah, naturally making all the perfect, to expire for the same. And then the CBD, any or work, give any questions for me. This goes over our finances, our marketing, our plan, one hundred and fifty things. All that kind of stuff.
I have no questions, but I'm in favor of break.
I'm good, one hundred.
And I can send that report that I've made. It actually is uploaded to the page, like your website as far as our reporting that goes to the auditor's office.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Please.
Back to my PowerPoint, please. All right. So the next one is the case one seventeen. It's the one twenty Holton Wood Lookout, West Virginia, two five days to stay. This was the one that you guys had previously asked me to bring back to the beautification committee. Um, the property owner had come here and she was fixing up the one that she wants to live in, in this building. She wanted it to be restored. The beautification still stands that they want that one to be restored. So I did ask them and they did vote generously that that one, they did want to. Um, on a side note, she does have a dumpster at the other house, so she is working. Um, she could find funding on that. Um, but we're on this case right now, so they, that's up to you guys, whether you want to continue to table it. But I did bring it back to the.
Is she a quarter?
Um, yes. I don't know. I mean, I'm sorry, that's, I don't, I don't know her. I just know these houses. They've both been in that condition for several years, so.
Yeah.
I just think they thought as though she's gonna have a lot of work to get in one little.
It's that, that is structural in fact.
It does just look that way.
It is. The board's opinion, it is probably a older mobile home, seventy, eighty, so it is sat in that. They did this repair. They think it's beyond repair.
I mean, that's, she said she wanted to use.
Shack or something. She's got three lawnmowers in or some, something like that or some stories.
She already has storage holdings on the other property. So that's, if their concern is that.
Well, I, I hate to say it, but I kind of agree with them. They need, it needs to be something, you know, I, I. I know her really well. I like her, but something needs to be done about that. If she's moving forward, you know, I think that needs to be.
So the complaint would need to uh, give her thirty days to demolish and dispose. And then she would be assessed a daily fine, a daily civil assessment of fifty dollars. Not exceed the cost of demolition disposal.
So moved. Did you have any questions, Ms. Taylor?
I do not.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one.
I need you to speak up a little bit, Angela, please.
Is the mic on? Did it turn itself off?
Is the light on?
No.
Hold on, I think the mic's off. Okay, we'll see.
Right.
Allison, can you hear me now? That's much better. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. We need to cut the mic on. Uh, ninety-one. All right, so um, the beautification met on March twenty-third and the property is abandoned. It is unusable and unsafe for human habitation. It is a general state of disrepair. Does not appear to be connected to any utility services. Um, windows are not intact, doors are missing, and there is refuse on the property. So this property, a short background, there has been eight fires. I have a copy of all the fire reports on this property. Um, there's now twelve. Okay, there was a, a fire that had three fires in one day. Um, Fredley also informed me that they have had several um, nine-one-one calls on it. Or, he was supposed to give me the reports, but I would say drugs.
So, you know, so.
That was my guess. Um, so every time I have been by this property, though, there are people on the porch.
Yeah.
I have sent letters to the property owner. I've also um.
Where are they at? Instate addicts?
So they actually had two different um, addresses. So I sent it to both. The one address is actually right next door, and the other address was in Lynnshaw, Pennsylvania. Someone signed the card, but I cannot make out the signature, but I've sent two cards and they.
Pennsylvania had signed, but.
Yes.
But, but the neighbor.
Got returned.
Got returned.
Um, so I've got no phone calls on it. I do know that this property was deeded to. You know, the person that originally lived there passed away a few years ago, and they deeded all the property to um, the current owners, so.
Fantastic.
Um, it goes to the seven six um, three zero, which is right beside it.
Okay, the house right beside of it is now empty. No one lives there. Um, no utilities are hooked up to it. And the people who are inhabiting that home took all the trash out of the front yard. And took it around the backyard and stuck it up under the deck. So. I was by there last night.
They left on their taxes, whether.
Um, so this one this year was um, says certified as safe.
Oh, okay.
Under the new program, so they have not paid their twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two tax season. They did not.
So are they gonna be May ninth? Are they on the list to be?
I assume so. If that's the date for the sale.
Well, I, I'll tell you, the uh, people who are inhabiting the home. A lot of questionable activities are going on, so I'll leave it at that.
About twelve fires there. I mean.
Yeah.
Then take a rock aside, just figure out something.
So they're actually using barrels inside, like the burn barrel that you see outside, they're using this inside.
Yeah, to heat. You want us to vote on these separately?
Yeah, I think we need, you know.
County commission want me to reach out to these guys and, I mean, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the. Uh, beautification, uh, committee recommendation, but let me reach out to these guys and see if they can deal with it. Send them a letter asking specifically the purpose wholly of which would be, hey, won't you sign this over to us? You're not paying the taxes. Let us deal with it.
Yes, I think every one of them should be done that way.
Well, I mean, we send that in the letter. Anthony's got the, you know, signing it over, but maybe it's personalized letter, because I've had no response.
I mean, the letter that goes out from the beautification committee is somewhat of a form, and there's a lot of information in it. And I could just send one letter that's specific to, you guys aren't paying the tax for this. Obviously don't care about this project. Why don't you just sign it over to us or us? But if you guys are okay with that, I'll go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Taylor, you good with it?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Now, do we have to take action on it since it is on the list, or is that going to be our action?
Well, I mean, we could actually, we could bid and bid on it, couldn't we?
I think you'd do land bank. I think you'd be a land bank in order to bid on, but I'm not.
I'm, actually, I think you're moving. But, but the reality is, is if it's sold at auction, there's an early lengthy period of time in which the property.
Eighteen months.
Should be redeemed. So essentially what it means is instead of somebody bought it at auction, we'd have to, and we bought the property, we'd have to. Essentially redeem it. This is one, this is, this would be a classic case of buying and picking the po.
But we can still take action on it, but you can still send that letter probably to, yeah, just to say that, that it's either the letter. And they get to the other one right behind it. You've got two choices. Either the letter you send saying to sign it over to us, the next letter, or if it's in the same letter, I don't know. Probably to be two different letters, exactly. And the second letter says, okay, the first one or this one. So what do you do?
Well, well, probably if they're gonna sign it over to us, we could hear something, maybe before the city go. And then leave it on this pay the taxes and uh, put them on the easy and whatnot.
Okay, yeah. All right, so Anthony, how should the motion be?
Well, um, I'm assuming the beautification is one to, one to adopt the enforcement agency's recommendation. Which is demolish and dispose of within thirty days and failure to achieve that goal. Resolve in a civil penalty of fifty dollars a day being assessed against the owners not to exceed the cost of demolition and disposal.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, uh, next time I'm gonna have it right here in front of me.
I don't think you have enough room.
I probably don't.
Okay. All right. Next one is one, case one fifty-one. And this is Fifty Prudence Road of Oak Hill, West Virginia.
Yeah.
Property is abandoned and not being used as a residence or business. The dwelling appears to be unusable and unsafe in habitation. The roof of the dwelling is compromised, overgrown vegetation. The dwelling or structure appears to be in a general state of disrepair. The enforcement agency met on March twenty-third. And they would like it to be demolished and legally disposed of. Here's a few more pictures. The house, and speaking to the board, you can't get to the house. The property owner did contact me the day of the beautification meeting. He spoke to Alan, and he said that his son, who lives in Florida, is gonna move in that house.
Yeah, well, he don't know the house very well, does he?
Well, and he asked me for a copy of the ordinance, and I did send him the ordinance, and that was the last communication I received.
Well, the house is a little different than the garage, yeah. Yeah, it's on the same.
The garage is on the main road and then kind of over. But it is been in that state of disrepair. Um, I got a complaint from a citizen, and it's been like that for at least ten years.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's true. And they, they are from out of state.
Um, the property owner does not live out of state. He actually does live in the county. It's set like that, and they did not feel as though the son was going to actually move up on forty.
Johnny, you want to make the same motion? You may have a second to go.
Yeah, so moved.
Uh, just to make sure minutes are squared away, so the enforcement agency's recommendation is to demolish and dispose of. I'm assuming the commission wants a thirty-day deadline. Focus on that. Failure to meet the deadline will result in a fifty-dollar civil penalty. Uh, assessed daily, not concede the cost of demolition and disposal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next case is one zero seven two P Ridge Road. This is in um, Oak Hill. The beautification met on the twenty-third and is um, abandoned and not being used as a residence. It is unusable and unsafe for human habitation. The roof or the dwelling is compromised. Structurally is partially or completely collapsed. So this property um, was purchased. Um, the previous owners have actually had it. They had some pigs on the property and uh, sent them the letter that they could not have pigs. Cause it's a um, rural clustered, and they flipped it and sold it to a real estate agent in Bethlehem for one hundred dollars. And I have sent several letters to the real estate agent and have had no response. So. And so the beautification, of course, they recommend that it be demolished and legally disposed of within thirty days.
So dispose, demolish and dispose of within thirty days. Failure to do so results in a fifty-dollar civil penalty assessed daily. In total, not to exceed the cost of demo and disposal.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next case is one ninety-five Deepwater Station Road. It does not have a physical address. I could not get one. Um, this property the patient met, and it appears to be unusable as a business. This property the patient met and it appears to be unusable as a business and it is not being used as a business. And it is partially encoverbed with vines and vegetation. The, um, committee met on the twenty third and they recommended it be properly demolished and legally disposed of. I have sent several letters. To the property owner and the only thing I can tell you is that it says that they picked up the letter at the hotel. No communication.
Which used to be a PSD.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
And it's still currently owned by them.
And that is now part of Armstrong Creek PSD.
That should record under this.
Yes.
They owe us.
Yeah.
Didn't say that. They owe us money, right?
Correct.
But I don't know what their intentions or anything to. Phone calls. I invited them to the meeting and they're not here.
So. Enforcement agency's recommendation is demo and disposal within thirty days.
Correct.
The commission is going to, uh, I'm assuming adopt that recommendation and then impose a civil penalty of fifty dollars a day. Not to exceed the cost of demo and disposal. If the demo and disposal decision created within the thirty day time period.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, uh?
Aye.
Okay, the next case is case one ninety six. It is four one six one Armstrong Creek Road. And, um. The beautification, um, they did meet. And they, um, this property actually was listed on Realtor dot com. So you do have some pictures of the interior. And it, it was recently sold. Um, so the property is abandoned and not being used with the residents. It is partially covered with vines and vegetation. The structure appears to be in a general state of disrepair. Does not appear to be connected to any utility services. The windows are not intact, allowing weather to improve. And it is accessible by permanent incense rodents. With this property just being purchased recently, we did reach out to the property owner. They did leave a voicemail. They are from North Carolina, I believe. Um, they basically in their voicemail said, I just bought it. It's gonna take me time to fix it. So, um, that was the only voicemail we had. Um, so the board did. Um, request that the structure be repaired within sixty days and, um, sixty. Um, so that is our request. At this time, they did not want it demolished. They didn't want to give the opportunity for the. Property owner to come to you guys. But.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna mention something, just, just covered basis. They're out of state, North Carolina, right?
Uh, we've allocated. Uh, yeah.
So when you send them a letter, do you send them a zoom link that they can zoom into the, uh?
I give them my phone number. Um, and I, I tell them what time.
Okay.
Meeting is.
That's a great idea. Maybe we should add.
I can add that to the letter. I mean, I.
Yeah, just because if I was out of state, I'd want, some people don't have time during the week to get, I'm just making.
I could get that everybody.
Yeah.
I can add that to the letter.
Yeah, if he was doing that. Yeah, so I mean, that, just to give them a chance, since they can't, they're working or something.
So I guess one, one simple thing I see with the enforcement agency's recommendation is. Repair within sixty days. But what is, what exactly does that mean?
They basically wanted them to obtain a building permit and start.
Okay. All right.
They don't want it done in sixty days, but.
Why do you want? Curious why'd they choose this one this way, but then the other one they?
Because this one has just been purchased within about six months.
But the Realtor bought one just month before, right?
But the whole front side of it. No, that Realtor bought every one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, okay, I thought it was.
Yes, and the other one above the back porch, side porch, um, is, is, well, the vines are growing through though.
So the enforcement agency's recommendation then notes is that within sixty days, the owner will obtain a. Uh, building permit and begin preparing the.
Correct.
So moved. Second. All in favor, uh?
Aye.
I thought she was logged off.
No, I wasn't logged off.
You just wanted me to say second, right?
No, I had it on mute for a second.
So the last case for today is one ninety nine. It is eight Gladiola Lane. It is in the Fallsview area. I'm gonna give you more pictures. Um. Allison, if you need more pictures, um, I can get an email to you. I walked the whole property. This property has been, it is an apartment complex.
It's a big piece of property.
Yeah, it's a big property.
So, um, I did, I mean, so the board did meet and it is in a general state of disrepair. Almost all the windows are open on this property. It does not appear to be connected to any utility services. Um, it is accessible by permanent incense rodents and it appears to have been used for criminal activity. There were lots of needles and graffiti on the property, so. The, um, with it being such a big property, the beautification. Committee met on March twenty third and they recommend that the structure, um, start being repaired within sixty days. They wanted them to contact the beautification with their plans on what they want being done to the property. From the locals, the property has sat in this state. For several years. Um. I don't know the last time anyone has lived there.
Is this one of the pieces of property that you?
Yes.
We were looking, yeah.
I looked at, I think I looked at this online.
So I don't, they don't think that thing needs to come down, but there's been no communication. I mean, the longer it sits there, there is a chance for a fire.
That's right, saw the group.
Is the owner local?
No.
Yeah, when I looked at the building.
The owner lives out of Maryland. Um, and they bounced back and forth, uh. Creating a. A business name, but their name has constantly been tied to the. So. I mean, it is a very big apartment complex. It has potential, but it has sat there.
Looked at it online. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's. Yeah. Thanks.
What do you mean the owner bounces back and forth? Like, what's the relevance of that?
One, one time they do it under a property management. Um, and then they do another deed to their name. So I'm not sure what they had. I don't know if it's a tax reason or what.
But they're basically transferring their shit back and forth between themselves.
But they keep their name on the deed. It always is under the same person's name.
But then they.
Yes, I don't know that, that's a legality thing. I'm not sure. But we've reached out to them. They did sign their certified mail, but no phone calls.
So they say sixty days to repair.
They, basically the beautification committee wants to figure out a way to contact these people and find out what you're gonna do with this property, because in the state that it sits, it's gonna get worse.
Yeah, it looks bad, but it looks like structurally. It's sound, really.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, definitely didn't want it demolished, but they need to, they wanna figure out what exactly they're doing with this property. It sat like that for years and nobody's living in it. There are no utilities. All the meters have been.
Well, they should give us an update on what their recommendations are if we can't get the property owner to respond or cooperate.
Okay.
So is, is action here? We divert for sixty days until the beautification committee can. Do some more work on it?
Can we send a letter on behalf of the county commission? Maybe that holds more teeth than the.
Well. I mean, if you want, I can send them a letter that basically says, we need to talk about this and don't. Communicate with the beautification committee that we're going to take steps. Adverse to the, um. To your interests. We, you want me to do that? I can do that.
Sounds good.
You heard the option of communicating and then if not, we're gonna move forward asking that the property be. Demolished and disposed of. Or you could, you know, do the other. Basically, something bad's gonna happen to you. I'll work on the wording.
I like to something bad will happen.
Not to her personally, just.
You good with that too, John?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
What was the most? What you hold in? Anthony's gonna write a letter, maybe please contact the patient. I guess within the sixty days.
Basically ask her to contact you.
The plan is, yeah, just give them a contact. Did they vote on that? Hmm, do they need to vote on that?
Probably.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I, I'll motion, uh. What Anthony stated, that he's gonna send a letter. To the property owner.
Discussing the implications of not providing a plan to the beautification committee within sixty days. Is that right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I second it.
All in favor, uh?
Y'all have more to move on.
Okay, back to the exhibit.
So the first thing on the exhibit was Anthony's.
Um, so that was Mr. Howington. Um, he has signed the agreement. Um, with the county commission to ratify the agreement, basically. Um, memory serves that. The, um, property can be redeemed up until April twenty fourth. Uh, it is not released prior to April twenty fourth, and at that point, the auditor's office should issue Mr. Howington a D. He has agreed to, uh, execute a voluntary lien. In favor of the county commission and then, uh, we are going to try to work to sell the property. Whatever money we get is gonna be split fifty fifty between the county commission and Mr. Howington. If by chance the purchase price exceeds eighteen thousand dollars, uh, we will only get the amount. Um, up to the lien amount, which is not, we'll only get a portion of the sale proceeds of the lien amount, which is nine thousand dollars. The county commission has to approve the sale of the property. Uh, which functionally with, with us having a lien on the property, we're gonna have to do that anyway. Uh, Mr. Howington's also given me, uh, permission to try to sell the property, so. My, uh, thought process on this, I've already downloaded the, uh, owner information for all of the surrounding parcels. Off of, uh, the eccentric website. So once we, once I get confirmation that he's received the D, I'm gonna send letters to all of those property owners and basically say, hey. Make us an offer and see where we end up. Um, Eddie's got the property appraised. At a fairly low, um, amount. Um. I mean, I, I honestly don't think we're gonna get our lien. Out of this property, but given the circumstances and given. Given where we stood, I think splitting whatever sale proceeds you can get is probably the best. Best way to do. Mr. Howington will make a little bit of money. We'll get at least part of our money back.
Yeah, I thought you said there was a certain amount up to.
Well, our lien is nine thousand dollars. So if the net sale proceeds are eighteen thousand, we would get nine, he would get nine. But if we end up exceeding. The, um, at that eighteen thousand dollar mark. Our lien's only gonna be for nine thousand dollars. So our lien would be fully satisfied at that point. He would get everything else.
Okay, what about twelve thousand? It was something that, it says twelve thousand.
I mean, whatever the, whatever the sale proceeds are, we split them in fifty fifty.
Okay, I thought that's what, I just want, yeah, I was making sure. I thought that's what it was.
In fifty fifty up to eighteen thousand, and anything over above eighteen thousand. Um, we just get our nine thousand, but, you know, I, I'll follow up with the names and the offers.
Yeah.
Five figures for this property.
Okay.
But, but like I said, I'm, I'm, there's, there's a couple of businesses over there. There's. Several residences, but I think somebody over there probably will end up buying yet. That's my best guess, but I'm gonna. Prepare a letter. Once we get confirmation that the deed is coming out, I'll send letters to all of those property owners. We just need to, we just need the county commission to ratify, but. The, uh, agreement with Mr. Howington.
Do we have the agreement?
Yeah, he's already said.
Yes, he has. I have it with me. I don't like that.
Okay.
You wanna see copy?
Oh, yeah, please.
Yeah, I thought we already approved it.
We didn't?
Who, I guess we approved. Uh, Anthony White about.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, I move we approve the letter. Or the lien agreement.
I second. All in favor, uh? All right.
And I move that we make those bridge day terms all expire April thirtieth as requested.
Second, all in favor, uh?
Aye.
Now we're on three.
Okay.
That is a hot water drain application. Does she leave? Okay, you'll skip because she gets that.
As well.
Um. Pax abandoned car. Is Kevin still in there?
Yep.
That's what I went to get when we got it. I have the printout in the office. Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, so the next topic is abandoned car at Pax.
Uh, yes, so we received a complaint, um, several weeks ago about. Junk car left on a. County commission, um. Mitigated, hazard mitigated property. Uh, went and did the inspection, did find the car parked there. It is actually. In Pax across from the Pax Fire Department. I requested a deputy come down. Do a vent inspection on the car. We found out who the owner is. Um, however, the property, the car has not been registered for several years now. It is parked on county property in the hazard mitigated area. And I just need to know what the commission's. Um. Take is on it, on how they'd like to have that, uh, removed from their property, or. Would you like to have, would you like me to have it posted, or how would you like for me to try to get ahold of the owner?
Where's the owner live?
Uh, the owner has a PO box in Pax, but we have no other contact information other than that.
Vehicle run? Or do you have?
It, it, it does not appear to be operable. No, sir.
It wasn't in the flood, was it?
Uh, not that, well, I mean. It could have been, but at that time I couldn't tell because it was afterwards.
But you tried to communicate with the owner to ask them to get it off of the property?
We have not sent a letter to the owner as the only contact we have is a PO box.
Well, I say we send a certified or registered letter, whatever the one is they have to sign for. To that, um, mailbox. Maybe Anthony, if you guys could come up with something. Um, letting them know that they have X number of days, you know, to retrieve the vehicle or it's gonna be towed. Um, to salvage yard. And. At, at their expense. I don't know if, if there's anything else we can do about it. Uh, maybe, uh, I mean, we could also publish if we had to.
Yeah, we can tell with it there and spam. How that work?
I think you could probably tell it.
Well. Getting the money one is another issue, so.
Well, just tell it.
Um, hey Kevin, can you give me the name of the owner and the address that you have?
Uh, yes, sir. I'll pull it from my report.
Could you give me the make, model and color of the vehicle?
I have. I have make, model, caller, VIN number. I have all that information, sir.
You got the VIN?
I do, sir.
Okay.
So this is the one I said we need a standardized policy for. If, if this happens. Instead of.
The reason regarding your email you sent about that standardized policy, I think we need one concerning, uh, the mitigated property altogether. Whether it be trash and debris or abandoned vehicle or something on county mitigated property.
There should already be abandoned vehicle law out there. I know a little bit about it. And this does fall in the category of that situation. This one does. Because it's not on their property.
But. You're right.
Thank you, Mike.
Well, so if we have one, why can't we just enforce it?
I, I think, I think you can, if, if the county has it, I mean, to me, there is. Yeah, yeah.
Statute already abandoned vehicles. Uh, so.
And this one does fall under that category. Simply fact because it's not their property, yeah.
I'm not familiar with that, but do you?
Oh, I'm, I'm real familiar with it.
I kind of, I kind of got it. We, you want to start on us sending a letter and that doesn't work, then we avail ourselves of the state statute.
That, that's fine with me, the two commissioners, yeah, that's good.
Yep.
Anthony, I will forward that to your email address or all that contact information and everything.
And how, how long do we want to get them to remove the vehicle?
Thirty days.
I was thinking two weeks.
I was gonna say, that's very generous.
John's feeling generous, I can't believe it.
And I'll send it certified mail and regular mail. In case they have something. So, two weeks?
Two weeks, good. Two weeks from the date, the letter dated February the fifteenth.
Hey, so you want to go back to, do you need to fight a digit later?
Do we even have to vote on that, Anthony?
Um. Probably would be a bad idea, just to vote, vote that I'll send vote for me to send a letter and give them two weeks to, to get the property, remove the car off the park.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Anthony sending the letter to the pro, to the uh, auto owner and give them two weeks to remove the property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to go back to Michelle's hobbler's application now, she is back?
Yep.
Yep.
Eric, the leader tip, thank many people were asking me lots of good questions about voting.
Um, so we have another round of hobbler money that's been opened, um. I sent you guys kind of my three options of what I would like to do, and it was pretty much a question for Ruth and for you guys as far as budgetary, what you guys thought would be available um, if we were to get the grants, so if you guys have any questions about it, I think it's easier than. I mean, obviously, I'd like to do the ones that have the most, but I understand, I understand how that works, so. They, uh, they are prioritizing again getting express votes for the three remaining counties that do not have them, but that would also require their, their commissions to come up with the fifty percent match. Um, and even if they did, and all three counties that would probably only expend about half of the million, so we have a better chance of getting what we're asking for, this, this.
Why are we asking for uh, more voting systems?
Uh, well, to um, alleviate some of the one, hopefully some of the longer things. Um, right now, we're running at almost full capacity where we had to uh, add the, add those precincts in this last redistricting, we only have one spare DS two hundred and no spare express votes, so if something happens on election day, we have to, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul.
How many did we have spared before the changes?
I think we had about five or six spare express votes, two spare DS two hundreds. Get another DS two hundred would allow us to put DS two hundreds in all three early voting sites, down in Montgomery and over in Denise as well as. Um, we found out had been uh, talked about questions during this last election.
So, in other words, the changes has caused us to have a spare problem issue with the uh, voting machines.
Correct.
Okay, more precincts now.
Yes, and there's, we'll see, we'll see if their care state has requested that we look at particular area where it's taking people longer than they feel it should take for them to get to a polling place, and so we might have to look at that and create a precinct, so.
So, before you had two and five spare, now you got one zero.
Right.
And what do you have in here for the uh, future? To give us spares?
Uh, so the third proposal, so DS two hundred and express votes are a fifty percent match, so to get the four express votes and not DS two hundred, we, the math would be twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
So, it's a total of twenty-five thousand, then?
If we did that and the whole, the E poll books for early voting, we could make that better.
So, it's just, so the fifty percent match is to be added, so that is?
Well, so fifty percent match, so I did two different ones, and we get different amounts of money. So, for the E poll books, our match is only fifteen. For the DS two hundred and express votes, it's fifty percent. So, if we did both of those in uh, quotes, our total match would be twenty-five thousand. Between the two different things, amounts. I know.
If I add these up. That's twenty-seven thousand.
The E poll books?
No, I didn't add the E poll books, I just added the first two.
Well, the first, the. The top one, the fourteen thousand one. Sorry, our total match is fourteen thousand, good lord, you can tell by COVID. Uh, Aunt Clotser. I'm looking at the map today would give us. Sorry, so our match would be four, almost fifteen thousand, you're about done, sorry. I've made to print that paper out.
You can take that with you if you go.
Yeah, so, sorry, let's go get some started in.
Take that with you.
Thanks, so, Matt, that I would give you the amount today would give us, is what I was doing. So, the first proposal, the match would be for all precincts would be fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and nine. And then the other two is if we just did one or the other. That was easier, sorry.
I was totally lost. So, the first one gives us, gives us the?
So, the match of the fourteen thousand would give us the four express votes, one DS two hundred and four E poll books. Cover early voting.
That's what the county would be obligated to, fifteen thousand.
Yeah. I was right on one, because it's half.
Fourteen something.
Yeah.
You got any questions, Tim? No, that was.
Derek, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you.
That was the question, I, I said, it just wasn't adding up in my head, and that's why. Mr. Taylor, you got any questions?
How much are you asking, looking for, can I just, you know, follow that sort of, it's fourteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, I might say fifteen. Fourteen what? Fourteen nine and nine.
It would be next budget year, because I don't think they'll give us the money until there's, this is up until May tenth, and they have ten days to meet, and then the other group has ten days to meet, and then they have so much time to even give us the money, and then we have to spend it within a hundred and twenty days.
Well, we definitely need to have backups in case there is an issue.
And that's what I asked for.
Or the next.
Oh, yeah, it would get the money, I mean, we'd have to spend it probably this fall.
Mr. Taylor, you got any questions?
I'm confused there, Bobby.
No, I was, I, all I was needing was the backups, how many backups you had before, how many backups you have now?
Yes.
We, we should, and I think we should have backups we had these before now. Things change, so. Well, I make a motion to approve the fourteen thousand, well.
Yeah, that one.
Fourteen thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a feature.
Second. Yeah, I can do it this way. Yeah, my log, Miss Taylor off too, she's still on, she's still on there?
I didn't hear her vote.
Because somebody else said they logged it off.
I was unmuted just now somehow.
Okay.
I did vote.
Somebody. All right, Ruth?
All right, the next thing is clarifying and standardizing the county work week. And Allison wrote us a new policy, thank you, Allison.
I did my homework.
She did, and it basically standardizes the work week for everybody, it's a forty hour work week with a paid lunch. Um, you can't take your lunch at three o'clock and leave early. Or come in late.
I don't have to work for you hours?
Oh, no, it's semi-dairy, it's if the employees, they are working it, it's excess hours.
Yes.
Yes. While reading Allison's.
Yep.
Do we have a copy of it?
Did you grab your book yesterday?
Yeah.
Are you, oh, they came in this morning, so I didn't.
Be honest with you.
Sorry.
Be honest, I didn't read it, usually.
There's an extra one I haven't read.
Ruth come up with something. And usually do that.
Now you can read it too. And there's going to be a whole lot more things to the personnel manual, because um, I think it's embarrassing we pay somebody to write that personnel manual.
Yeah, it needs a lot of work, but this was a, an important right issue, or part of it to go ahead and get established.
Right. And now everybody has the same forty hour work week as opposed to some thirty-five, some forty.
And is this, does this need to be signed and turned back in to you? What's the official start date?
Uh, it's right now, like, actually, I think it should start Sunday, and with A E P, we just have to figure out, we can send it out to everybody and make them acknowledge it at one time, so we're willing to have to print it. Isn't that great?
It's cool. Yeah, it's good. I like it. Yeah, it's cool.
All right, so I move that we approve it and distribute, prove it effective Sunday. At, minus anybody who might have been affected by it, but I think everybody's already transitioned. Um, and that we send it out through A E P to personnel.
Okay.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just been informed, we need to go back to the abandoned car issue.
Um, I pointed something out to me in the code forbidden regarding abandoned vehicles, we give them thirty days. There's two things, there's criminal penalties, one for abandoning, abandoning the vehicle. So, my suggestion would be, we give the guy two weeks to get the vehicle gone, or we'll institute criminal proceedings against him, and then if he doesn't have it within thirty days, then we can.
I knew there was something, something kept telling me thirty days for something.
Sure, you did.
So, with that additional, with that additional modification, I think you should guys are okay, then I'll draft the letters, and it'll basically gives him two weeks to avoid criminal prosecution, and then after thirty days, we'll it actually has jail time, too, potentially.
No, that's anything else, yeah.
Wow.
Like, yeah.
Yes.
Sure enough.
As, as long as it falls under the correct criteria, it does, yeah.
So, we don't need to revisit the vote, we just needed that information. Is that right?
Make sure the commission's, okay, with that modification to the letter, I'll, I'll word it that way, that we'll give him two weeks to avoid criminal prosecution, and after thirty days, we're going to deal with it. We'll move it.
Yeah. Then we will refer it to your office.
Correct.
Well, we'll need the sheriff department to uh, institute a criminal complaint against him.
All right.
Listen to your court. All right.
Okay, so seven and eight, both.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, nine, or I mean, not seven and eight, six and seven.
I think we need to go into.
Eight, we think we can go ahead and do. This is just the.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
C R S.
Community breakings.
Thank you, I'm like, what a C R S.
Yeah, that would be the issue.
Can't remember stuff.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
For we give people, we, our office, Alan, our office, we keep up with flip playing things, and as long as we do everything on the checklist, people go flood insurance, get ages kind of great. It's just an annual, they come onto our office, nobody here immune, but when we doesn't.
And a few years ago, we got a significant rate reduction.
Yeah, and if we continue doing other stuff with, you know, lower rate, but annual.
Achieved. To approve the first one. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the C R S.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we don't have anything for that broadband funding for that guy, I think we consider it in the back to the sudden money for the.
Oh, yeah, but. Uh, yeah.
They want a community support letter, he explained it to Paul yesterday.
I'm, you know, we'll, we'll see what he does get.
Yeah, he didn't give all the information.
Once he gives all the information, I was going to give commissioners.
Yeah, postpone it until he provides the information.
Do we need to revisit the vouchers and invoices?
Yes, but in the most possible states.
Well, Mr. Crookshank did text me and said, he, he was on here if, if we wanted to call him.
Mr. Crookshank's just called in, he's unable to get on to Zoom, he said he is available by phone if need to be, I can try to dial him in and concentrate things through on my side.
Is it good with you, John?
Yeah, that's fine.
That'd be fine.
All right, give me just a second now, I'll get him dialed in.
I don't know whether Miss Taylor had any questions or not, I know me and John did. See if I'm, if I have questions, it must always mess here.
So, why are you waiting, since you did not vote to postpone the letter, you want to vote to postpone it? The letter's delivered, we need broadband and.
Well, I make a motion to postpone the broadband support letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commission, I have Mr. Crookshank's when you're ready.
Well, I'll let John go first. Hey, Steve?
Yes.
Um.
Eric?
Yeah, I, I, last uh, last meeting, we did a building that the fire services wanted to put on their property, where we had bids that came in for it. Um, the one bid was a full bid, the other bid was a partial bid that did not include the bulldozer work or concrete. I want to make sure that you guys are going to either rebid that because, or something, or go with the original full bid, because it did not meet the criteria of the bid that was posted on advertisement.
On advertisement.
First, we're still checking into that, I wanna be absolutely sure, uh. That, uh, uh. We, we need to do due diligence and make sure about all that, I've had other people looking at it and until I get that back and be able to look at it myself, uh. I, I don't wanna commit to that, you know, we may have to rebid, but the other bid added a bunch of stuff that was not asked for in the bid. Uh, I know one, one thing that was missing in there was a, a typo and, uh. It didn't change the price, but, uh. Just not ready to commit to something that we're not sure about.
Well, I, I'll tell you this, as one of the three commissioners, I will not approve, or I'll ask them not to approve this expense until that bid is done correctly.
Well, uh, we agree with you, that's why we haven't approved anything.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. And, and so that you know and everyone else knows, I no longer work for Dan Hill. So, I, I don't have anything in that, in the, uh, the game, but. Making sure that these bids are done correctly is part of my job and I will do it to the best of my ability.
Well, that's the way we want it to, it's, uh. Certainly taken a long time, uh, and, uh, prices have gone up, but, uh. I know the one bid is, uh, way over and, and added stuff that wasn't in the bids, uh. Uh-huh. If, if, uh, if the lower bid isn't, uh. Doesn't meet the specs, then, uh, we're gonna have to rebid, so.
Well, from what I read, it definitely didn't meet the specs. Go ahead.
You done, John?
Yeah, I'm done.
Mr. Crookshank, you, you still there?
Yes.
The Atlantic Emergency Solutions. Uh, what exactly is that?
That is required by the state fire marshal's office, that's a testing on, uh, every air pack in the county, uh, every year. Has to be done according to, uh, uh. NASH, uh, NFPA, the, the state, uh, fire marshal requirements.
Okay, I see there's, uh, six, is there six different invoices here? Something like that.
Yeah, that's not all of them, we'll have one for every department.
Okay, were all of them done the same day?
No, no, it takes a day for every one, uh.
Well, I mean, what I'm confused about, it says the same day on them. So.
Well, that was probably the day, uh. That the order was entered, but, uh, yeah, they were done during the month of March, uh.
Let me see, John.
And, uh. It was from the first of March through the, uh.
Sixteenth.
I believe the twenty eighth was the last one done.
Well, what's this?
We had to move. Right now to, uh, April with the death of their chief.
So, well, the point I'm getting at, let me go ahead and get to the point. Is. Couldn't all of them be done on the same day?
Oh, no, it, it pretty much takes, uh, a day for, uh, every department, they have to be put on a special test machine and, uh, uh. Thoroughly checked over, we're betting our lives on those things.
Now, let me ask you another question. Is there any way this could be done in-house?
Uh, at one time, uh. I went and was trained, uh, to the technician level and had a test stand. But, uh, there's been so many changes, uh, with those air masks, uh, there's so much electronics on there now. That it takes somebody that works on those every day to, uh, be familiar enough with it, uh. Uh, we did the other way when it was, uh, uh, a separate process and, uh. Uh, but, but now it, it just, uh. It's quite complicated to, to do it with all the electronics on there.
Electronics on, on the machines that test it?
Those things have, uh. Uh, pass devices, uh, if you don't move for so long, uh, the alarm goes off, they have a buddy breathing system. Which, uh, uh, lets somebody, if your mask, if your, uh, pack fail, you can plug in to your, uh, person with you. And share their air, uh. There's electronic monitors that show you how much air you have left, that shows up on a display. Uh, there's. Primary and secondary pressure reducers, uh. That lets you, uh, have enough, uh, high-pressure bottles, but, uh, low flow to the. Place, either one of those fails, there has to be a bypass in there, uh, it's quite complicated, I, like I said, I did it. Uh, uh, where we could save money doing it, but, uh. Now it is quite, uh, technical and, uh. Simply not, not cost efficient and not. What I would deem safe, uh, we need somebody that, uh, has familiarity and does it all the time. And plus, a lot of that stuff is warranty work, uh, a lot of our air masks are under warranty.
You say under warranty? Is that, is that what you said?
Yeah, if, if any repairs, you know, you have to pay for testing. But any repairs that have to be made, but it depends on which repairs they are, what's covered under warranty. There's obviously some things that aren't covered under warranty, but, uh, uh, a lot of things, uh. They still fall under a warranty.
Okay. With, with, and, and the reason I ask this, Mr. Crookshank, is. How much is that facility gonna end up costing the taxpayer? That new facility down there?
Well, I think, um. I believe in a couple of years, it would be self-supporting. If you're talking about the training center.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not asking in a couple of years self-supporting, I'm asking how much it's gonna cost the taxpayer?
I'd like to look at the, uh, overall plan, but probably, uh. The price of a couple of ladder trucks.
Yeah, about one point five million?
Uh. I would say that would be about right between one point five and two million, that when you count the everything. But that's over a period of time.
What I'm saying is, you, you got a state-of-the-art fire, fire, uh. Uh, system down there, right? Everything's state-of-the-art, everybody's drooling at the mouth to have what FED County's having. As far as a fire, uh, a training center, correct?
Yes, sir. That's what I've been told.
What's been told, and we don't have the ability. Or the know-how. To be able to test stuff in-house, cause it's too complicated. To test, to save the taxpayer money. When you can do it yourself, but it's too complicated. I mean, you see, you see where I'm going with this, I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, we got the state-of-the-art. Fire Training Center, but yet we cannot even, we don't even have the ability. To test our own. Uh, items. We have to farm that out, so that, that, that's where I'm going with this, I want you all to think, you guys to think about this. And, and what I'm saying. To me, if I had to.
A, top, our training facility has to do with training, if you want maintenance, uh, we would probably have to, uh. Hire somebody to do all the required maintenance.
I mean, I mean, you are sending people, you're gonna send people through, I mean, what I'm saying is, I just, I just think if you have the state-of-the-art. Fire facility. You should be able to at least be able to test your own stuff to save the taxpayer money. I mean, I'm, I'm just, maybe, maybe I'm too business-wise, maybe I'm too, too much that, that. Uh, maybe I'm looking too much into it, but the testing of this equipment, what do you think it costs each fire department a year just to test? All the equipment of the year? You've done this for years, I have.
A ton, a ton of money, a ton of money, uh. And this is all, uh, required stuff, we have to, uh, test the, uh, pumps on every engine. We have to, uh, uh. Do the air mask, we have to do aerial apparatus, ladders, uh. There's a ton of required maintenance that fire marshal looks at every year and checks off that we've done it, um. It is expensive, uh, it's part of doing business, uh. Plus, all this stuff relates to the safety of the firefighters.
No, I, no, I agree, I, I'm not saying to do away with it, I'm just saying, I, you know. It, to me, I, I would want somebody in-house maybe. To, to be certified, to, to go through this stuff, even if you had to pay them yearly salary, and I'm just, maybe I'm wrong. But if you take.
Be glad to have somebody. I'm, like I said, uh. When I was full-time, I did a lot of that stuff myself, I could see with the air mask that it was getting so technical that, uh. I was not going to bet my, uh, expertise, uh. On everybody's, uh, betting people's lives on my expertise and, uh, and, uh. Uh, fixing the mask, we've got basic, uh, we've trained people in each department for the basic repairs, but when you get into all this electronics, it's, uh. It's quite expensive, plus the, the test stands expensive.
Okay. I was just wanting to throw that out.
You know, and it took, uh. It took, uh, a month of, uh. Let's see, sixteen departments, uh, for a week, so that's, it, it took basically a, a month of, uh. Uh, somebody's time just to do the air mask.
Yeah, you're probably looking at. About twenty-five thousand dollars just to do the air mask with the, with the sixteen fire departments, right? Testing.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, and there's multiple testing on, on all the vehicles, pumps and everything. Uh, yeah. Hoses, yeah.
That lasts, multiple testing on what?
I mean, you got hoses, you got the, the pumps on, everything has the, the pumps on the.
Yeah, but. Testing is another required, uh, thing, uh, and, and by, by doing all of the. Departments, uh, uh, we get a, we get a better price than the standard pricing. Uh, that's one way we've saved money over a lot of other counties, uh. And those things less expensive is, is where we're going together on stuff. You still there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm still here, that's the only questions I guess I had, Mr. Crookshank.
Alrighty.
Thank you. You know, I wonder how much the equipment and training somebody would be to get us, to be have the ability to do certification. Well, they, they're, they're, they could do it, he, he's done it before, they, they, you, you do go, you could go through a. Uh, you can be taught to do all this, I mean, even testing the pumps, even testing the hoses. You know, you.
Well, if we decided to create a fire coordinator, a permanent, non-contracted. Position, that person could have that responsibility among other things.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, I just wanted to bring it up and talk about it a little bit.
So, are you approving vouchers and invoices?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the only two things left are the voice count MOU and. And animal shelter MOU.
Yeah, we need to go to executive session, speaker Michael.
Legal counsel, that is.
Legal counsel. Eleven fifty-four.
Alright.
It just come out executive session at twelve thirty-one, no decisions is made. Uh. Like to continue with. The animal shelter MOU.
There it is.
Anybody have any other questions? I motion to approve the animal shelter MOU.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She needed.
Are we back on?
Yeah. And she said she can't hear.
Recording and.
We're on there, are we back on? He says we are.
Can you hear it now, Allison? She said I can't hear.
Can you hear now? Yeah, that was me. She's not, that thing didn't.
Let's make sure that I'm speaking to you term off in any time.
We're coming through, I had to log off and log back on to get audio.
Okay.
We should have to do the same thing. It still didn't record everything.
On you.
Well, I think that's part of it.
Can you hear us now, Allison?
Allison, are you there? Nope, she's not there.
This little thing I'm hearing, it doesn't, that's what he's, it's a little round thing. That's on, that's on, that's on.
Little round thing.
Not needed, that's on. Well, I watched him go, it's getting.
Check one of you.
It's okay, you're.
Working on. That wouldn't affect our, our ability to hear us, right? Is she the only one that can't hear or?
Kevin, can you hear?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay.
Like I said, I had to log off and log back on.
Hey.
Yeah.
Okay. Just put me on speaker.
You're, you're coming through now, you're coming through now.
I can't hear you guys though. I'll mute this.
Can you hear us now? Okay, she's hearing fine, okay. Okay. Alright. We, we come out, if you didn't hear, she probably already known the process, Ms. Taylor, we come out executive session, I said no votes was made, gave the time. It's, it's no decision. And, uh, I made a vote for the, uh, animal shelter MOU, John seconded. And we were saying, all in favor? There you go, that was the last one we needed. Okay.
Looks out, please, the MOU.
Let's first do the, please. I make a move.
That's the MOU.
Okay, that's my one in the head, Allison. You make, go ahead.
Let's make a quick record on this.
Go ahead.
I just think this is important, um. The Boy Scouts and the Fayette County Commission have been in discussions about various topics, one of the topics that came up for discussion was. The utilization of the JW and Ruby Hazel Welcome Center, um, for, uh, county. Uh, purposes, and when I say county purpose, I mean for the betterment of the county, so, uh, what has. what has happened is negotiations have entered and, uh, the Boy Scouts have expressed an interest of entering into a lease with the county to lease this Welcome Center, um, and so, uh, we've put forth the lease and that this is what that lease is for, the, the purpose would be that the county would hold the lease, but then the county could, you know, sub-lease for basically no rent or price to other individual entities within the county for the betterment of the county through the, uh, help with the Regional Development Authority, um, and so that's what this lease is, um, and I just, just for the record to be clear, this is not a unilateral want, this was after discussions with the Boy Scouts of America that they've expressed an interest in leasing us, the lease wouldn't go into effect until after their Jan. three this year though, but we can go ahead and enter into it. Um, so I just want to make that clear on the record, that this is a lease that was, um, has been discussed, it's not a unilateral want, it's been a mutual discussion, uh, with the lease.
And, and this lease is to promote Fayette County, promote recreation, promote development, promote, promote all areas of Fayette County, this is what this lease is for.
Correct, and it, it would be, for lack of a better term, a hub where entities that promote, uh, Fayette County could utilize to have space right off of nineteen to promote the county.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the lease with, uh, BSA and Arrow.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She had the second second. Mike, you want to elaborate on the MOU?
Yeah, just for the, for the record, um, just to, to set forth some, just to put this in the minutes and into the record, that, um, again, throughout discussions with the Boy Scouts of America and their local leadership representation, um, the Fayette County Commission has been working diligently in ways to expand, uh, the Boy Scouts', um, goodwill and presence in the county, and one of those, um, through those conversations, then we had the lease, but a second conversation has occurred about potentially creating a working group of local leaders in the area, elected leaders, um, and the Boy Scouts to discuss, um, how the Boy Scouts can help the county and how the county can help the Boy Scouts with respect to economic development for all of Fayette County, not economic development for the Boy Scouts, but for economic development, uh, within the county, um, that, uh, with the help of the Boy Scouts through their connections, land, um, things of that nature, that uh, we, the, the county could utilize to grow the county in terms of economic development, and so, um, a, as a way to make that discussion a reality, we have drafted a memorandum of understanding creating this working group that will set forth the, the, the parameters of it, and, uh, we would like to, uh, approve this and get it sent to the uh, members of the working group for their hopeful approval, and we can get this working group underway, again, uh, this is something that is for the benefit of all of Fayette County, not for the benefit of the Boy Scouts, it's just using, using the resources of the Boy Scouts and their knowledge in terms of various infrastructure needs, um, community fundraising, grant application fundraising, um, their, their land, uh, if they would be willing to, uh, part with it, um, to develop the county for use of other entities in the county, uh, and for the betterment of the county and for potential economic, uh, development.
Basically a working partnership.
Yes.
For the county, Fayette County is what this is about.
Absolutely.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it, right?
That's it, right, we don't have anything else?
I'll motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
All right.
See you, Ms. Taylor.